A bit of deja vu working here. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Chair Bone. We'll start with Supervisor Arroyo.
Here.
Supervisor Wilson.
Here.
Supervisor Bone.
Yep.
Supervisor Midron.
Here.
And Supervisor Bushnell.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Let's salute our great American flag.
Fudge me to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
You're on.
Good morning, Chair. There are no modifications to the agenda today.
How about that? Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? I change it round.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Vernon Price. I'm a community person. I'm wanting to speak on item number 13 of today's agenda. I've tried to get ahold of Deputy Director Paul McNackey to get a better clarification, but yet have not been able to get in touch with him. I'm looking at the review of the bylaws. No, that's a different one. State hospitals. We're looking at $500,000 that is going into something that is requiring a work group. In that work group, in your contract, it's not limited to. What I'm wanting to do is improve or to put people that have lived experience in that work group, mainly with those with mental illnesses that give them recidivism in and out of jail, in and out of prison. So I would like for those of us that have lived experience with Department of Corrections and rehabilitation and mental illnesses to be a part of that work group. Thank you so
Good morning. Ryan Derby, Emergency Services Program Manager with the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services, speaking on item D10. I just want to take this as an opportunity to recognize the good work that the DHHS emergency prep team is doing. Over the last several years, they've evaluated approximately 50 potential shelter facilities, and what you're seeing today is nine of the most accessible in the county that we can use for emergency sheltering. So we have Terrence McNally back here that doesn't want to speak, but I do want to recognize the hard work of his team and thank him for his efforts.
Thank you. And now we'll go to proclamations. And what we're going to do on proclamations, we would like one person from each proclamation to come up and speak, and then after everybody has done their presentations, if there's any public comment, we'll go from there, which is a little backwards from what I was going to do, but sorry. So the first one will be... Glasses, Rex. Ms. Rock, where are you?
Here.
Oh, there you are. Get up here.
This is a proclamation honoring Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Whereas the U.S. Census Bureau estimated that nearly 26% of the population of Humboldt County is 60 years or older. And whereas throughout the U.S., elder abuse is widespread, significantly unrecognized, underreported, and underprosecuted. Whereas Humboldt County Adult Protective Services receives an average of 129 reports of elder and vulnerable adult abuse and neglect monthly. Whereas elders deserve respect and gratitude for their lifelong contributions and the roles they play in their families and communities, including the preservation of customs, traditions, and the history of Humboldt County. Whereas elder abuse and neglect negatively impact an elder's emotional and physical health and can result in isolation, loss of independence, resources, and/or life. Whereas APS is committed to responding to and investigating allegations of elder and vulnerable adult abuse regardless of the elder's education, socioeconomic standing, ethnic background, or sexual orientation, and providing time-limited case management, emergency shelter, and tangible resources, as well as participating in multidisciplinary personal teams as appropriate. Whereas APS works with the District Attorney's Office, law enforcement, and other service providers by participating in a coordinated response and organizing local training to strengthen collective knowledge of abuse, neglect, improve communication, and enhance elder abuse investigation and case review. Whereas Humboldt County is committed to working with community partners and local tribes on prevention and service coordination, including adapting emergency response procedures as needed, conducting annual outreach to ensure the safety, additional outreach to ensure the safety and well-being of our elders and vulnerable adults. Therefore, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors proclaim June 20, 2024 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month and recognize that elders are valuable members of society who have the right to live safely and securely in our community. They have earned it.
Ready, Apple?
Yeah.
All right.
That rush.
You guys don't sit while you're rushing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Should I get...
I will. We will frame this up at our office. So thank you for honoring elders with this proclamation. And I also want to thank the board. I know that the board has been supportive of some letters written by the department just advocating for the funding to not be cut. I think probably everybody is aware of what's going on with the California budget. So I really appreciate the support that funding will continue for elders in our community. Kind of just in comparison, the elder population is the fastest-growing population, yet if you look at the supports and funding for elders, it's in the millions. And compared to, for instance, child welfare, that's in the billions. So a lot of times elders and dependent adults are kind of the forgotten folks in society. And I mean, I think I was up here last year in front of you talking about the same subject. And I mean, I'm a year older now. Before too long, I'll be eligible for APS services. And I just want to thank our staff just does a really wonderful job. I know that some of you have reached out to me personally, as well as staff and administration, and we've responded throughout Humboldt County during natural disasters, during the pandemic, and just kind of day-to-day with all of the calls that come in regarding elders. So I think that that is all that I really have to say. I don't know if anybody has any questions or anything.
Anything? Steve?
Well, thank you for being here and for the support you provide our elders. And in that honor, there's an old-timers parade up in Orleans happening on June 16 of this year. It's a wonderful little local parade they do every year to honor their elders in their community. So just wanted to share that.
Oh, that's amazing. I didn't know about that. So great.
And I'm one of those that reach out personally to Carrie and had a situation this last two months, and it didn't satisfy, but she worked with the family in Los Angeles with a relative up here and did everything they could do. But you also have to have somebody that's willing to listen, and it was a tough situation. So...
Yes.
But anyway, thank you for your team.
And so everybody that's here and listening, I just encourage you to check in on the people that you know and love, whether it is a family member, a friend, or a neighbor. Isolation and loneliness really has detrimental effects on our elders. So sometimes just that personally reaching out really can make a difference. So hopefully, everybody goes and does that sometime this month, and not just this month.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thanks.
And then the next one is a proclamation for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA Pride Month. This is brought to us by Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you, Chair Bone. Before I invite Cerberus up, I just want to see if the chair from our county affinity group is here. I don't think so. I don't see them. Okay, Cerberus, please come on up. Cerberus is with Queer Humboldt here to receive this. Whereas in 2022, proclamations were signed by the President of the United States and the Governor of the State of California declaring June as Pride Month, and the County of Humboldt joined the state of California and federal government in observation of Pride Month to honor the history of the LGBTQIA+ people and support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas the month of June is annually celebrated as Two-Spirit, Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Intersex, and Asexual Pride Month throughout the country to honor the 1969 Stonewall uprising in Manhattan, which is acknowledged as a tipping point for the Two-Spirit LGBTQIA rights movement. And whereas the First Pride March was held on June 28, 1970, in New York City on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising and continue across the U.S. and in Humboldt County. And whereas the rainbow flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support for social movements that advocate for Two-Spirit LGBTQIA+ people in society and shall be raised annually throughout the month of June at County of Humboldt facilities. And whereas LGBTQIA+ people are residents, colleagues, leaders, neighbors, and loved ones who continue to have influential and lasting contributions that make the county a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit. And whereas the County of Humboldt is committed to supporting visibility, safety, dignity, and equality for Two-Spirit LGBTQIA+ people in our diverse community. And whereas in 2023, the County of Humboldt's first queer affinity group was established and is a space for employees and their allies within the organization to convene for the purpose of policy suggestions, networking, and professional development. The Queer Affinity Group is designed to cultivate an inclusive workspace for all employees and is not intended to be a space of educating but organizational progress. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports Two-Spirit LGBTQIA+ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice within Humboldt County and across the nation. And whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, and the County of Humboldt calls upon the people of this county to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists. And whereas celebrating Pride Month promotes awareness and provides support and advocacy for our community and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, advance equal rights, and honor the humanity of all people. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims June 2024 and annually thereafter as Pride Month in celebration and support of the Two-Spirit LGBTQIA+ community.
This one's really good. It's extra thorough. Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks. People, for the safe words.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. In a time where thousands of bills are restricting the rights of queer people across the nation, it is wonderful to have elected officials being unapologetically queer-affirming. In moments like this, where I have the privilege of being part of this progress, I'm taking to the thoughts of those who paved our way here and the people who carry that work today. I think of the tribes who have tended this land and the natural diversity of life since time immemorial. I think of the Two-Spirit and a ditch of queer individuals alive today and who have always been here. I think of the ongoing international efforts to heal from queerphobia, genocide, and bigotry. I think of the bravery and resilience of our local leadership, our elders, our youth, and the wonderful organizations working collaboratively and in solidarity towards a brighter future. I hold space for the work and people doing it, the people striving and the people enduring, past and present, because without them, I wouldn't be here in front of you today. Often in my work in Queer Humboldt, I see people confused as to why Pride Month exists or why we celebrate it in June. On June 28, 1969, a queer bar in New York City called the Stonewall Inn was raided by police. Patrons of that bar, led by trans femmes and drag artists of color, rose up to defend themselves in their space. This revolt, now referenced as the Stonewall Riot or just Stonewall, greatly impacted the modern fight for queer liberation. Because queer people stood up then against brutality and injustice, I can stand here today in a temperature-controlled room in front of smiling faces. Stonewall is why we celebrate queer pride in June. We cannot erase the suffering endured by our community, but we can celebrate the life, resilience, and opportunities our queer ancestors and transcestors had gifted us. We continue to devote ourselves to intersectional liberations and living in our truths, not just in honor of us and not only in reverence of those who have come before, but also for the future generations that are yet to come. Queer teachings inspire, guide, and drive our community forward. We continue to work towards a brighter future where everyone is free to love and express their authentic selves, not just in Humboldt, but everywhere. I would like to ask everyone hearing me now to practice today. Practice accepting the parts of yourself that might seem queer. Practice compassion toward your fellow community members, and practice nourishing yourself with hope and joy. Do this for yourself, your ancestors, and the people who will call you ancestors. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll bring it back to the board. And then is there any public comment on the last three items?
Ken Swatzky, I'd like to speak on the elder abuse topic. It's something that so people, sometimes we get grumpy as we get older. My father, a lot of us, my father was in a home, and he'd have panic attacks every weekend. If we didn't drive him to the hospital, he'd drive himself because he wanted to talk to somebody. And so we can be difficult to. For you young people out there, one of the things that perturbs me the most, I call it vulturing. There's people who are not related to people or even family members that are sitting there, and when somebody is vulnerable as an elder, they swoop in, they take their possessions, they get them to sign over their bank accounts, and it's amazing how this abuse happens and how prolific it is out there. And it's very disturbing to see that happen. As mentioned, we as elders, we have a desire to feel safe in our homes, and that's why you always see me backing the Sheriff's Department for the money, because that's the only thing between us and total lawlessness, other than vigilantes and kids taking care of things and others. So that's why I really strongly support, we have some sheriff's people in here, support their budget item. And so us older people do need to take care of each other, and if you have extra time, adopt another old person or a young person to adopt an old person, just call them on the weekends or stop by, because that makes their whole week. Their whole week is when you stop by. Maybe you bring something for their pets or be the children that they never had during their life because things didn't work out. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on elder abuse today.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I would like to recognize and thank Dave Kahn from Fire Safe Council, and also thank Harry Vaughn for willing to be seated on that Fire Safe Council. That's a lot of work. That we really depend on volunteers, and I appreciate everybody that is willing to be on one of our commissions or boards. Also, I want to remind the community that the Ag Pass program, which is run by the Sheriff's Department, if you are livestock or farmer and you need to get into your place during a fire or any emergency, you need to have this Ag Pass. You can apply online. It's really important. You won't get past closed lines unless you have this. No exceptions. So please do, if you're one of those producers, apply for this Ag Pass. And thanks to the Sheriff's Department and Ryan for running this program.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to thank supervisors for bringing to this board and also supporting the two proclamations from many parts of my family, I would say, the elders and the young ones. And then I just wanted to, I mean, one thing is on item two, which is the supplemental budget for Murray Field. When I read that, it really sounded and looked like a subsidy of fuel costs. And I, you know, I just want to, well, we're in a time of budget crunching, and I just find that this, you know, we rebuilt the fueling station at that airport with CARES Act money, I believe, and now we're subsidizing the fuel costs there. I just want to, you know, think about that in terms of our priorities and where we spend our money. I'm not going to oppose this today because honestly, the fuel's already been purchased. There's no way to, you know, there's not any functional way to clot back, but I want to make sure that I had some criticism of this before. I'm still not sure why this is a good business practice for us as a county in general. So just ongoing concern about that. But overall, this is everything else in here. It's wonderful. I really appreciate the work of the DHHS and the Sheriff's Department bringing together all the partners, you know, to help all the folks in the community. And awesome, the parade in Orleans. So I've never been to it, but I'm sure it's pretty awesome.
Supervisor Midron?
Yeah, these local parades are a lot of fun, right? Each community has their own little thing. Even Warren Creek out on the Bad River has their own little, I think, July 4th little parade. So these are incredible, wonderful community events. I too want to thank Dave Kahn, as well as Michelle Bushnell dead. And Dave not only has served on the Fire Safe Council for a number of years, but he's been involved in forest thinning and forest health projects as a chainsawer and as a laborer for well over 40 years. So thank you, Dave, for all you've done for our communities, and we appreciate that. Also, I want to thank Alyssa Norman, who's been a real force on our behavioral health board, a very positive force, working with everybody there to try and help out in important stuff. So thank you, Alyssa. And that's it.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. First, I want to note that there's quite a lot of really good stuff on this consent calendar, a lot of grant funding and program implementation that we're able to do. And I would say every consent calendar is like that, but this one is especially robust and good projects. I also wanted to acknowledge Alyssa Norman. It's been an honor to work with her in a variety of ways. And Alyssa is now employed by the county and doing her dream job that she went back to school for, and I wish her all the best, and I'm so grateful to have her on board in that way, too. And it's been amazing to hear her story and really powerful to have her advocating for the disabled community, for people who experience mental illness and behavioral health challenges. She's incredible. And I also wanted to welcome the five folks that, presuming this goes forward, the five folks who are going to be appointed today to the Behavioral Health Board. It's been an honor to work with them so far, and I welcome them as new colleagues on that Behavioral Health Board. I want to thank Cerberus for those powerful words. It's a great reminder that social change doesn't just happen through prayers and hopes. It is made by people. And so thank you for that reminder of the history and how we got to where we are today and what we're still as a community and as a nation and as a planet grappling with. And beyond that, just I agree about the elder abuse awareness. I've seen it happen firsthand, and it's a complex and difficult problem because people often do not feel safe addressing the problems that are happening, and it's a tough nut to crack. And I appreciate that there are people who are dedicated to addressing the very complex challenges that come with elder abuse. So thank you.
And what... Go ahead.
Yeah, I had one more thing I wanted to say. Vernon, I just want to say how much we appreciate you, Vernon Price. You have been a real force as a spokesperson for those with lived experience. I know you faced many, many challenges. I'm so grateful that you continue to live here in our community and speak for all of the services that we need for people in this community. So thank you for that dedication. And I'd love to hear from you, either by email or phone, about how you think we might be able to influence that recommendation that you came up and spoke about here to us. So again, thank you for your continued support for everybody in our community, Vernon. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. And then I guess we're all giving shout-outs. So I think Supervisor Arroyo mentioned, you know, we have a consent calendar every week, and rightfully so. We know that this board can be fragmented at times, probably my fault, but 90% of the time, we vote 5-0 on items that are here. You'll see this on the consent calendar more than likely. But I did want to thank Public Works for hanging in there. You'll notice that on here, we're still working with Quincy Engineering on the Holmes-Larabee Bridge project and the McCann Bridge project, which are paid for quite a bit with almost all, with federal funding as we move forward. And then the one that I really got is they've reached out, that we bought the property. We're in the planning, this brings us forward to the planning stage for a state-of-the-art public health laboratory that can help people, not just our county, but as we've seen Pelican Bay, Del Norte, wherever we can help out with that. So we'll have a state-of-the-art up near by the Clark Complex. So I want to thank Tom and his team for sticking in there. A couple weeks ago, we got the, they're starting on the Matol Bridge, which started 26 years ago. I'm not going to say government moves slow, but we move slow. But hopefully, we got it right, and we'll get a good bridge up there for the community out there. So I wanted to thank them. So thanks. And with that... Nikki?
We need a motion, Chair.
Move to approve consent. Look at that, one and...
Give it up.
One and two consents. See what I told you?
Okay, now I can start. Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Midron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Looking at our CIO... What? Yeah. Public comment on non-agenda items, as I...
Ken Swatzky, we have some interesting things going on out in Blue Lake. I kind of keep you appraised and apprised of that. I don't know if I mentioned last time, but we're having a situation where we have, one person is a boss, they're each other's boss in Blue Lake, and I don't feel that's a functional situation. We have a city manager who has, whose boss is a Blue Lake City Council member by the name of Chris Edgar, and Amanda Mager is the city manager, and she has hired that person on to be in Public Works. So technically, she is his boss, he is her boss, and there's all kinds of guidelines as far as communication and things like, technically, I think you folks may have the same thing. You're really not supposed to be telling Tom Mattson's employees what to do, but in this case, we have a council member telling his coworkers what to do, and so it's very confusing, and we feel it's a major conflict of interest, and hopefully, that will come to some form of resolution. Either Chris needs to resign from the council or find other employment. And so I think that will be his choice. That will probably be coming out. I wanted to mention Annie and Mary Day has a parade, I think it's July 14, something like that. Am I date wrong? I could be corrected. But again, you were talking about parades, and wonderful place to come out there. It's usually sunny in Blue Lake when it's foggy in town, and so I hope all of you will feel free to come and participate in Annie and Mary Day's. I know some of you do on a regular basis. It's always good to see our representatives in our district and our nearby districts coming to these events. So anyway, that's a little bit. I had some negative things, but I'm feeling pretty positive today, so I'm not going to do any negative things on this particular time. And I did wish to, again, I went on an inspection with the sheriff and code enforcement and DHHS. Very good team.
It was a homeless encampment, allegedly was a big one. There were only four little sites there. One person was there. But I did get to see your staff interact with the one homeless person there. The Sheriff's Department recognized the guy, I think, from 30 years ago, so this has been ongoing. And your staff did go and address this person, and hopefully, the next day, he was going to be given a chance to get back into the system and get the helping needs. So, that's greatly appreciated when we have a team that works well together. So many people complain that they don't work together. In this instance, it was fantastic. So, I really would do a shout-out for those three groups and how they work together in these circumstances. Thank you for having the opportunity to speak today. Thank you.
We have one caller in Zoom.
Okay.
Caller 5805. Star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Shannon Townsend, Bedis, Eureka. I just wanted to voice my concern. I sent a letter to Supervisor Arroyo yesterday, along with the District Attorney and the Sheriff and the grand jury and the Humboldt County Office of Human Resources and CIO. In regards to that flag in the District Attorney's Office window, it's a huge free speech issue, and it's affecting a lot of people and their opinion of the county right now. A lot of people in the public are confused about what that flag represents and how that speech is being interpreted by the public. It's really concerning, especially during these times of war. I want to thank Supervisor Arroyo for responding to my letter and agreeing to discuss this with myself and one other via Zoom. I invite any other supervisors who wish to talk with us about this issue to contact me. We are very concerned about the free speech issues that the flag represents, and that it has been allowed to be displayed for months and months and months, even though there have been consistent complaints and communications to the District Attorney's Office, the CIO's office, the Board of Supervisors, Human Resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more callers.
All right. And now, I'll look at our CIO. Can we, are we ready for the headwaters?
That one is time set.
Is it a time set, too?
Yeah, it has to be heard.
All right, sorry.
At or after that time.
Sheriff's here?
Yes.
Dwayne, you want to, Lieutenant, Captain? Thanks, Dwayne.
Yeah, thank you for your time today. I just wanted to take this opportunity to present the information regarding immigration statistics for 2023 and ask your board to just accept the report and then open it for any questions or comments for me.
Anybody have anything? You're good.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on that? Seeing none? Anybody call in? Seeing none? Do we need to receive that, or?
Yes.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we receive the presentation.
Second, the motion to receive the report and the presentation.
It's going to take longer to vote than the presentation.
Okay, we're going to start with Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Middrow?
Yes.
And Chair Bone?
Yes, and I want to thank the Department of Corrections for doing this every year and keeping track of so well. Thank you. Well, Public Works?
He was here. Great.
Is there going to be a closed session, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, that's going to take about five minutes. All right, we're going to take a break and go into closed session, and I'm going to let County Council read it in.
Thank you, Chair Bone. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54954.5 and 54957, in order to consider the public employee appointment for the position of the Agricultural Commissioner.
Any public comment on this? Seeing none? See in about 10 minutes, or actually at 10 o'clock. Is that okay? We'll be back at 10 for the RCRC presentation. We're going to come back in session. Appreciate that. County Council?
Thank you, Chair Bone. With regard to item K1, the board voted unanimously to appoint Wayland Shaw as the Humboldt County Agricultural Commissioner effective June 9, 2024.
I like the fact he didn't stay around to hear it. He actually just went back to work. So, and with that, I'd like to bring up Pat Blacklock from RCRC. He's been the Executive Director for almost four years now. I've got to serve with him. I got to serve for a little over seven years with Greg Norton, and we were kind of nervous because Greg had us going in great directions, and this guy picked it up and seamlessly carried the ball farther than anybody. So, it's been a seamless. So, tell us what we're up to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Thank you, board members, for having me here today.
What, I'm sorry?
Sorry, just real quickly, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Pat, the report out wasn't received on Zoom. It was muted. So, can we just do the report out real quickly on closed session?
It's a deja vu day. I'm getting you.
I'm sorry.
With regard to item K1, the board voted unanimously to appoint Wayland Shaw as the Humboldt County Agricultural Commissioner effective June 9, 2024.
Same applause.
Thank you.
And now, you're back.
Thank you. Hopefully, you have a slideshow that, okay, excellent. Oh, sure.
I can do it if you want. It's up to you.
I'm happy to do it. Make it easier for you.
Thank you.
While they're bringing that up, I would say that feel free, please, to stop me anywhere along the way where you have questions or feedback, because that's frankly what I find the most value, is hearing what's on your minds, and then I can carry that back to the team. So, please do stop me as we move along. The goal today is to provide an update on RCRC and our activities, and then also those of our affiliate entities. And I'll go through them in a little more detail as we go through the presentation, but you can see I'm sort of here, all on one slide. But I want to begin by saying we tried to do all of our activities by aligning it with our strategic plan. And actually, it's timely that I'm here because we are in the process of updating our strategic plan. We've just completed the first three-year cycle, moving into the next three-year cycle. So, your feedback could very well help inform that next version that we're in the process of doing. And I'm hopeful that the topics here won't be a surprise to you. Broadband, housing, health services. And in fact, on that health services one, we just completed a report with UC San Francisco and the County Medical Services Program that looks at the healthcare workforce at a granular level, including within Humboldt County. You can drill into that report and see everything from the number of behavioral health technicians to dentists to nurses and classifications in between. And so, that's just an example of how, when it gets into strategic plan, it really helps drive the work that we do and ideally collaboratively with other partner organizations. And you'll see that when we adopted our strategic plan, our board updated the vision for RCRC to be both your advocate in Sacramento and in DC, and then also to be an innovative service provider. Really, what that means is to be the entrepreneurial arm of rural counties. When there is a challenge too big for a small county to address on their own, they come to us to see whether through the power of 40, we can scale up and achieve some economies of scale and address it. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. But for, since RCRC's inception, advocacy has really been the cornerstone of what we do. And again, here's a snapshot of some of the topics we're working on. I'm hopeful, again, that none of these are a surprise to you. A couple that I wanted to call out, one is you'll see the California Public Utilities Commission. We are now an active participant in 18 proceedings before the CPUC. Things like landlines, carrier of last resort, for example, we're an active participant. Service quality, the development of service quality standards for cellular service, for example. And then PG&E's, numerous proceedings with utilities and PG&E, including, I know one of the concerns that I think you've expressed up here is the length of time it can take to PG&E develop a facility or to serve a commercial operation, et cetera. We're actively involved in those proceedings. And then the way that we update our policy is that we form ad hoc committees to address areas of topical interest. This year, our board asked us to form two, one around the Williamson Act, how that might be reinvented for the future, given that it hasn't been funded in many, many years. And secondly, road infrastructure, and I want to thank Supervisor Bone, because you were one of the early advocates that we formed that ad hoc and are a participant on it. So, thank you. But it's out of recognition that our vehicles are evolving and gas tax revenues are declining. At the same time, the pavement management index scores for most counties are declining, and so that's not a sustainable solution. So, our road infrastructure ad hoc committee is looking at what the future might bring. Couple pieces of legislation that I want to call out specifically. We've done a lot of work in the area of cannabis. We are sponsoring several bills focused primarily in two areas. One is to assist with code enforcement of illegal cannabis operations to make that a more streamlined process for counties. And then, at the same time, to try to streamline the process for legal growers to obtain their permits or legal cannabis activities to obtain their permit. So, a number of bills in that area. Another area where we have legislation pending or supporting legislation is around energy and utilities. And again, that same issue of the time it takes to provide basically service to operate to a commercial or even hospital in some cases. So, there are a couple of bills on that front that we are actively participating in. And then, lastly, insurance. Property insurance has been a big issue for us, and we are actively, we had an ad hoc committee last year that updated our policy. Now, we're actively participating in the legislation. Supervisor Bone, I know, I think you participated in a little Hoover Commission recently and testified there, so thank you for that. Well, and thank you, and I saw Connie in the audience as well. I need to thank you both because annually, you help raise hundreds of thousands of dollars over your time serving as the auctioneers for annual nonprofit fundraisers. So, want to thank you both for doing that each year. Thank you, Connie, and thank you, Supervisor Bone, for that. I was going to switch to affiliates, talk a little bit about those. I know I'm moving swiftly, but I also know you've got a big agenda. So, again, don't hesitate to stop me as I do so. Golden State Finance Authority is a joint powers agency, a public agency that we operate on behalf of all 40 counties, and it helps primarily with helping individuals achieve homeownership in our communities. But it also helps with energy financing, infrastructure financing. And in Humboldt County, you can see over 100 individuals now, or families, have been able to purchase homes using down payment assistance through Golden State Finance Authority. One thing that Golden State Finance Authority and our, and we have a national arm, the National Home Buyers Fund, but one thing Golden State Finance Authority put in place a couple of years ago now was a program to help county employees and help you with recruitment and retention. It's called the Assist to Own Program, and if a Humboldt County employee is looking to buy a home, they can get 3.5% down payment assistance at zero cost. What that means is that there's no interest, it sits there as a second the entire 30 years. There's no amortization of interest during that time and no payments due during that time. And GSFA, the GSFA Board felt it was important to provide that program as an investment in our rural communities, as they recognize that vacancy rates over the last couple of years have been quite challenging. And it looks like in Humboldt County, you've had six county employees use that program since its inception. So, that's actually pretty good, given that homeownership, the sales have been relatively low during that time. So, happy to see that and always happy to provide more information about it. If you have, for example, Realtors Association locally that might like to learn more about those programs, we're always happy to have someone participate and provide that information. Golden State Connect Authority is our newest public agency, joint powers agency. It was formed to assist communities with deployment of broadband. And it was, as I like to say, it was formed with a budget of zero, two and a half years ago. Within a year, it had a budget of 19 million to help counties with actual engineering of fiber systems. And we have presently 1.2 billion pending in financing before the California Public Utilities Commission to actually deploy a publicly-owned, open-access broadband system. You'll note that Humboldt's in the gray there because you have an asset that most of our counties don't have. You have Cal Poly Humboldt helping to develop fiber systems and broadband access in your community, along with Trinity. And in fact, I couldn't help but notice the amount of conduit sticking out of the ground that had been newly deployed along 299. So, there's evidence right there of what you have in terms of your partnership with Cal Poly Humboldt and with Connie and the work that's being done up here. But most of our counties don't have that. Hence, Golden State Connect Authority being formed to try to duplicate some of the work that you're already doing here. I want to switch to Golden State Natural Resources, which is our newest nonprofit, and talk a little bit about why it was formed. And that was out of recognition that the forest resilience projects, forest health projects weren't happening at the pace and scale that our members wanted to see. And in fact, that the state of California had set as a goal, which was to see a million acres of forest health projects occurring between state and federally-owned lands. And that goal is aligned with the latest science, the, on the middle there, the University of British Columbia Center for Climate Justice issued a report in August 2022. And there's a quote that I think is really relevant to why we formed GSNR. "There is broad consensus that forest restoration is urgently needed, that is ecologically informed, thinning, burning, and planting to increase forest resilience." And that sort of summarizes the science for why the state has set the goal. And then ultimately, why GSNR, on the right, the Nature Conservancy and Aspen Institute issued a report in March 2023 that said if we are to achieve the goals in the Wildfire Task Force Report, and as indicated by the science, there was going to need to be partnership between nonprofits, government, and our federal agencies to do that. And that's really the intersection where GSNR hopes to assist. And so, the first step of that process is we have a master stewardship agreement with U.S. Forest Service to help them complete and get approved forest health projects. We are piloting that right now in the Modoc National Forest. We are working with them on a supplemental project agreement, project for a 32,000-acre forest health project there, that where we are acting as the project manager, and we are completing the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, environmental review as part of that. The goal is to help them, they have, like counties, have a significant staff capacity issue, vacancy issue. So, we're moving in, contracting with them, partnering with them, to help them get some of these projects approved, for which they have funding, but not the staff capacity to complete. And the Modoc is our first. We're working very closely, not only with the Modoc National Forest, but I was on a call with the regional administration out of Mare Island, because they are very supportive and want to see it succeed as well. But even if we're successful with these projects, there isn't an outlet right now for the biomass. And in many cases, they are just piling it up and burning it in the forests. And so consequently, we have searched to find a commercially viable outlet for the biomass, because while there's a lot of one-time state and federal money right now for these projects, that's beginning already to dissipate. And as Secretary Crawford shared with our board at a recent meeting, we need to find a commercially viable outlet if we are to sustain it. And so, that's what, the second phase of what Golden State Natural Resources is focused on. And we've searched internationally at what the options are, and the option that we're pursuing at present is to convert that, particularly the low-diameter biomass, into industrial pellets. And those pellets are primarily used as a replacement for coal overseas, although increasingly, we're seeing interest in the U.S. domestically for them. I was talking to corporations developing a sustainable aviation fuel program, and they are converting their program to use pellets. And so, we, the USDA is projecting increased demand for pellets over the next 10 years, as countries use them as a replacement for coal to meet their climate core goals, like Japan, the UK, Poland, Taiwan, et cetera. But domestically, we are also expecting to see increased demand of some of these new emerging technologies, like sustainable aviation fuel takeoff. We're hoping to release the draft environmental impact report on that this summer, and then we'll go through the public review phase and then hopefully get to a final environmental impact report, either later this calendar year or early next year, and begin to move forward with the, developing the project, move past the planning phase at that time. Then, our last public agency is the Environmental Services Joint Powers Agency. This is made up of 27 counties. It's an optional agency, so it's not all 40. And the 27 counties have banded together to try to achieve the Waste Management Regulation to comply with them together. And for many of our smallest counties, they may have only one member in their entire waste management team, so it's really difficult for them to achieve compliance with them. But also, we can develop legislative strategies, like helping exempt, for a while, the smaller counties from the 1383 regulations, to give them time to get there, et cetera. We provide technical assistance in terms of when it is time to comply, to help them get there, and then help with grant acquisition and grant administration as well. And then, the last nonprofit, or last entity that I was going to speak about is the Rural Advancement Institute. And this is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit focused on education and research. And in 2023, we completed a research project in collaboration with Sacramento State that looked at our rural counties getting their fair share of housing dollars, affordable housing dollars. dollars, affordable housing dollars. And the short answer is, some are not, some are, but many are not. And for those that are not, we actually then engaged an intern to help us do a qualitative study to figure out why, so that we can see if there are some solutions that we can help with in terms of the economies of scale. And then this year, we are working to complete a research study that will look at the challenges faced by smaller fire departments and ambulance providers in terms of reduced volunteerism, increasing call volume, and how that challenge can be addressed for the future. And then we completed our first educational tour this year with urban legislators down in Mariposa County to help familiarize them with rural county topics and issues as they embark in governance of the legislature. So that's a very quick summary of all things RCRC, Supervisor Bone and board members, but I'm happy to respond to any questions or take any feedback you may have.
That was a lot in a hurry. Supervisor Madron.
Well, thank you so much for coming up and giving us your presentation. Really appreciate the work RCRC does. And we have some great engagement there from Supervisor Bone, Bushnell, and as well as Connie Stewart from Cal Poly. So appreciated all those highlights. A couple of things, I'm glad to see you had Williamson Act on there, and there's consideration of trying to revisit that topic. For a long time, I've been talking about this thing called Williamson Plus, which is the idea where, right now with Williamson, you get a property tax break, but that's it. And, and the property tax break says, keep it in ag. But what if you're keeping it in ag and going above and beyond with your roads, with your wildlife, with, you know, your soils and water? Shouldn't there be increased incentives, both tax incentives as well as permit incentives for those landlords who want to go above and beyond just keeping it in ag, right? So that's one of the concepts that I've been hearing talked about around the state. Another one is water storage. You know, the state did provide a waiver on property tax improvements for water storage, but it's only related to residential. And it really needs to be related to all lands. You know, we all need to be storing water, and whether it's from a hard surface into a tank, which is kind of what it's focused on right now narrowly, but it'd be wonderful if it could be focused on ag lands as well as pond construction, engineered pond construction and other kinds of things like that. I think we really need to look at incentivizing more water storage in California, right? Another one is for new cities, they don't get a share of vehicle license fees. So just about every county has a community like we have here, McKinneyville, which is our second largest city in Humboldt County. It's not a city, though. It's unincorporated. And so there is a process going on to explore the potential, and of course, not getting a share of vehicle license fees is absolutely one of those things that's prevented new cities from forming for a long time. And I know it's a bit controversial, counties, cities, you know, that kind of thing, but still, it'd be nice to be able to remove that barrier. Last thing I'll say is that with biomass conversion, there are a lot of concerns about big mega plants and things like that, as you well know. One of the things is technology has improved dramatically for mobile biomass conversion using what's called curtain burners, and even have little power plants that you can hook up to the curtain burner. So you can literally bring the curtain burner to the site where the slash is being produced, which removes all of that fossil fuel cost of hauling. Whether, you know, first hauling it to a centralized plant, and then secondly hauling it overseas, or even if it's here in America, you know, those things create kind of a carbon negative equation when you start spending all the fossil fuels to haul it. So if we can go onto those sites and convert it right there, that's great, but what we're missing is the battery trailer to go with the chipper and the curtain burner, so that once you, you know, develop that energy, put it into a trailer, and the only thing going down the road is the, the battery trailer. So we need to talk to Tesla probably or somebody. But, and you know, you've got to be able to go to a place where there's a grid tie, where you can upload that energy and then take the trailer back. So there's some really great technology evolving around biomass conversion in a mobile way, so I just wanted to share that. That's really all I have, and I appreciate the hard work you guys do.
Well, thank you. The Clemens pick on the Williamson Act are very timely because our ad hoc is meeting right now, so I can take this back and fold it right in, so thank you.
Really great opportunity to reward those stewards.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Wilson.
Let's see, there's a lot of really great programs there. I'm really excited to hear about them and have known about them. I'm just going to go to the, the most controversial in our community, straight to, straight to the nut here. So the, the, you, you had this report where GSNR and the Nature Conservancy and another organization came together to, to discuss this issue around forest management and, and the biomass issues in that. And then, then you're, then you kind of went into what you're talking about in terms of this program, that you're looking at the potential of doing wood pellets as, as a one of the ways to deal, to deal with managing this, this biomass. Do you feel like the Nature Conservancy is still, do you feel like that partnership is still there on, on that track? Or like, where are your partners in this? And, you know, we hear some controversies around the, the issue of how we're managing biomass in terms of carbon sequestration and management on the planet. And so I think criticism is that, well, okay, that's great, they were pulling it off the landscape so it doesn't burn. So that's one very strong, very big value, but then we're talking about taking that same biomass, putting it in the pellets, and then shipping it to Asia. There's, you know, there's footprint, carbon footprint associated with that and other sort of concerns. One of them is, are we going to incentivize maybe an overharvest of, of biomass on our landscape? So I just was, just want to throw those out there, those were here, and so if you could speak to some of those.
A couple of points. One is perfectly transparent, there are national environmental organizations that oppose any intervention in the forest, and they oppose this project, and they very actively oppose this project. We have been having conversations with what I would characterize as the in-forest environmental groups, particularly in the central Sierra, to, who are there living, working closely with the Forest Service to try to figure out what are the best solutions. They have been great partners in providing us, we haven't asked them to take a position on the project, what we've asked them to is engage, provide us feedback, help us develop it. So for example, one of the concerns that they said is, look, we recognize there needs to be an outlet for biomass. We think that's, that's a good thing. However, we want certainty in terms of where you're going to source this biomass, that it's not going to be clear cutting, that it's not going to be some of the heritage jokes, et cetera, that there are, is going to be environmental review before a project occurs. How are you going to demonstrate that to us? So we began looking at the best practices in California in terms of vegetation management guideline practices. We looked at Cal Fire's Vegetation Treatment Program, EIR. We looked at UC Berkeley's EIR, where they identify our project. And we began to compile all that information. Then we released that for review back in February, well in advance of the draft EIR, because we wanted to get that feedback from those in, in the community environmental groups. And they provided feedback on it and said, this is the right path, but now we need to know from monitoring and verification, how are you going to ensure that what you have on paper actually occurs? So that's what we're working on right now. And I say all that to give you an example of how we're engaging with the environmental community to get their feedback and how that helped inform the project. A second piece that I should speak to is, there's definitely a concern out there in terms of tail wagging the dog, maybe, in terms of if these plants are built, are they going to drive projects in the forest as opposed to projects in the forest driving them? That's something we're trying to be very cautious about. However, as I mentioned at the start, the state has set a goal of a million acres of treatment that they have yet to meet. We're trying to help them with that. Secondly, there's discussion of doubling that to two million acres as being the appropriate number to move towards. There is nowhere near an outlet for that biomass, and if our plants were up and running at the size that we're talking about, we probably couldn't meet the two million. So we are a long ways away from ever reaching a point where the plants would be driving the demand, as opposed to right now, we are definitely trying to find an outlet. And then last thing, carbon negative that I want to speak to. We have partnered with a private organization that is developing with UK government a carbon negative power production program that uses biomass. So they piloted that first plant a couple of years ago, and now they're looking to go to commercial scale in twenty thirty, where it would use pellets to produce power, capture the carbon and sequester it. And so we're talking to them about whether that potential exists in California. There are certainly already efforts to do that in the Midwest. And I say it to say, our long-term vision is, can we integrate with some of the emerging technologies so that, at the end of the day, we have healthier forests, we're producing green power, and it's carbon negative? And that's the long-term vision that we're working towards.
And just, thanks for that, and I mean, I would encourage folks that they're more interested to contact you guys directly, to get the information that they need. And then who's the lead agency for the EIR that you're talking about?
Golden, under, under California Environmental Quality Act law, it's Golden State Finance Authority. And that's because it holds a master stewardship agreement with the U.S. Forest Service, and it is the agency closest to the project. And under, in simple terms, under SEQA law, the agency closest to the project serves as the lead agency. Other agencies serve as responsible agencies. So what that means is, Lassen County, Tooleme County are responsible agencies, so they're reviewing the administrative draft EIR to provide input on it, but ultimately, the Golden State Finance Authority, made up of county supervisors from each of the forty counties, will be the entity to certify the environmental document.
And so that's a joint powers authority?
It is.
Okay. Okay, that answers enough for now, so thanks.
Thank you.
Supervisor Row.
Thank you. I had a similar set of questions, but some of the things you said made me think, oh, I'd like to make some additional points. I, I'm not in touch with or familiar with any current conservation groups that have the forest management approach of conserve land and lock the gate and throw away the key. I think that's, you know, that's, perhaps you're dealing with some of those groups throughout the state. I, I know certainly here, we don't have that outlook anymore, and none of the environmental organizations I'm familiar with do. They understand about, you know, forest management and forest health, and a lot of, you know, I think are pretty up on the research around, around that. So I, I'm less concerned about the impact of, you know, removing the biomass from the forest, because I think there's a, a general understanding that that is in fact better for forests, better for the entire ecosystem, and, you know, helps prevent wildfires. So I think those are all win-wins. I've certainly heard a concern, and I think we've, you know, repeatedly been contacted by community members who are concerned about, you know, as Supervisor Wilson said, really creating a pathway to market for a product that's going to be burned somewhere with fewer environmental regulations and, you know, air quality and, and the, the export model being something that there are, I think, fairly legitimate concerns about. I understand we're kind of between a rock and a hard place when it comes to how to address our pretty significant forest health problem from decades of mismanagement. And, you know, I'm concerned about the role that essentially we're tacitly endorsing in that. And, you know, want to continue to ensure that, you know, I'm part of the Redwood Coast Energy Authority Board. We have questions around biomass that come to us from the community all the time. I don't think there are any easy answers around this. But, you know, I, I want to be sure that we're all clear on, on what we're supporting, and I think the huge footprint, you know, greenhouse gas footprint for shipping is, is another consideration. Now, when we're talking about gasification, you mentioned production of clean fuels for aircraft. Is that through gasification plants, or could you say a little bit more about that process?
I'm not the best in terms of speaking the technology of it, but yes, it is to produce, use biomass to produce a sustainable aviation fuel. And that is an emerging technology, I would say, in the U.S., once supported by a number of federal investments. They originally, I think, were planning, many of them, to use wood chips, but are increasingly looking at pellets because of the consistency of the product, and that is, they need a uniform biomass product coming in, and pellets can do that better than wood chips. But I want to come back to the concern you raised at the beginning, which is greenhouse gas impacts, and we want to be certain that we are having a, at the end of the day, a positive impact in terms of healthier forests and healthier communities. And we approach it from a public agency ethos, and so we have decided voluntarily that we're going to go above and beyond SEQA in terms of our analysis, and particularly with the life cycle analysis of greenhouse gas emissions. So one of the things that we're working on right now, as we finish up the draft EIR, is the total life cycle analysis of greenhouse gas emissions to see what are the true impacts of the entire system, so to speak. And even though that goes above and beyond SEQA, we feel it's a necessary step to try to address the question. So I don't have that report yet, but look for it to come, because we want to make sure we have good data with which to make decisions on questions such as yours. So I don't know if that's helpful or not, but that's how we're trying to incorporate feedback, again, from, I, I totally agree with what you said, the environmental groups that we're meeting throughout the state of California, working in the forests, definitely are very constructive in terms of recognizing the work that needs to be done in the forests. And so they're providing feedback like, okay, this sounds good on what you're describing, but we want to see data in terms of what are the true greenhouse gas impacts, and we don't want to limit it to just a SEQA, and we said, okay, let's do it.
And if I might just add one more to that. I, I, I want to, you know, funnel this towards something productive and say that, you know, I really have heard a lot of support in the community for exploring the gasification technology and really using that as a method to produce, you know, clean hydrogen or other clean fuel sources or lower carbon footprint. I don't think there's any perfectly carbon-free fuel source or, or way to meet our energy demands. But, you know, I know that, you know, Humboldt Redwood Company and their partner Mendocino, or their sister company, Mendocino Redwood Company are exploring that gasification plan in Mendocino County, and I think that, you know, there, last I heard about that, which was a little while ago, there was a really clear need for modeling for the demand and all the different avenues for demand for that resource. And it's not going to be possible for folks to invest in that without modeling that demand. And if there is indeed a glut of, you know, of, of forest products that, you know, I know we have statewide, but particularly in, did you mention MODOC and Lassen Counties? Was that where it is? You know, I, I would, I would just encourage, if there's the opportunity to look at that as an investment, that it, that that be explored in addition to the wood pellets.
Absolutely. Because at the end of the day, what we care about is advancing the pace and scale of forest health projects. It's not about producing pellets. And if we get to a point where we're helping the MODOC and other forests advance their projects, and there's an outlet for them, that's great. That's what we want to see happen. Right now, there isn't, so we're working on this. My hope is that with time, you'll see the technologies like you described become available at a commercial scale. There are long ways from that right now, which is why we're focused on pellet production, why potentially in the near term it's overseas shipping. But for the long term, I suspect we'll see increased demand domestically, and in some cases, some of those very technologies you're describing may seek, as I mentioned, like sustainable aviation fuel pellets, because they're easy to transport and they're a uniform product in terms of production. So at the end of the day, like I say, we just want to see healthier forests, and as these technologies evolve, so may our plans.
End it? For now?
I, I think for now, yeah. I, you know, I, I do, I'll just say out loud what I'm thinking, which is that, you know, if we create pellets and put a lot of effort into constructing pellets, the easiest thing to do is to burn them and to create, you know, energy. I think it's, it's more likely that that will set up, you know, a system that is geared towards the combustion of a resource versus other avenues. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I suppose advocating for something that takes away the combustion element and, and explores a different technology, or doing it as a bifurcated process so that, you know, I hear what you're saying about the standardized size, and, and I don't really, you know, feel like I'm, I have the technical expertise to, to evaluate that, but I, I, what it logically says to me is that people can burn these, therefore they will keep burning them, because that's the easiest thing to do. And it's easy to set up relatively a system that can create the pellets for combustion versus, you know, these, what I think would be bigger investments upfront, and which is, you know, the, the push that we're seeing around energy technology, that we make these investments upfront to have a, a better end game, and that's, you know, something I'm concerned about with climate change. That said, I really appreciate the, I want to note that I really also appreciate the loan, homebuyer loan program, and that I'm grateful that our, some of our county employees have been able to participate in that. And I, I don't know, have you, I'm, I'm curious if Supervisor Bone, how has that been shared with the local real estate community?
We've, I've told the real estate board about it. They're aware of it. We had a, it's been a couple of years, we're probably due for another one, through HR, we did a all-call, a webinar for our employees, and I think, at least what, two hundred and sixty of our employees, it was a big number, I, I'm just guessing, but it was a pretty big number, and we got six out of it. Now, when you look at it now, within, back then, everybody'd go in and get a rate of three percent if they, you know, had seven hundred or better. Now it's a little bit different. It's a little tougher market and everything else, but there are still, we still have a lot of employees that want to buy houses. So it may be time we have another webinar and, and address that. I mean, we've got a, we've got a team of thirty-four people that work on so many different angles and stuff like that at RCRC. And there's, I mean, this is just a small part of, of what we do, I know.
And we have other programs too, that can help, like first responders in your community or hospital staff, and so to a degree, you have a Realtors Association if they have a lunch or something like that. We're happy to have someone provide more detail on the full array of programs.
I will. I will.
Because we oftentimes find that lenders aren't quite as familiar with them, and that's where someone's going to find out. When they're buying a home, it's typically the Realtor or their lender that's going to familiarize them with it.
Well, we all have lunches with the Realtor group on a regular basis, so the next time I, I am called, I'll call down to the office and
Absolutely.
Get somebody up here, and then I won't have to hear about how long permits take and why isn't this fixed.
We'll make it happen.
I'll change the whole dynamic and get a, get a month off. Supervisor Bushnell?
Nothing?
I move that we receive this report.
I'll second, thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Pat, thank you very much, I appreciate that you responded very quickly. Public comment on this item?
I promised him I'm going to say nice things, so I'm saying nice things about him, fantastic work. Strongly support biomass seems to be the main one here. I did want to make mention, I have worked with fuels reduction with, I think, the Will of Quick Fire Safe Council, I think they used to get a couple hundred thousand, I think they got five million this year. So I think some good work will be going there. I give them free hand on all my property, I think we'll be doing some burning and whatever technology they want to try. One thing that wasn't mentioned here, forest health and things, I would, be my ask, that the people of Humboldt County, forest health and all these things, we'd like to see all of our water stay in our watersheds, we don't want the Mad River taken, we want the Eon put back, we want the Trinity Water put back in its watershed, and if there was one main thing that I'd bring forward that wasn't really emphasized, that's going to be it. Regarding biomass and pellets, ditto to what Steve Madron said. Now, let's just pretend I was Level 10 functional autistic and I could channel Elon Musk, what would be the next step here? That's a good question, right? So you put the energy in the grid from these sites, when you can hook it up with the battery system, and then you take it down to an 800-foot-long battery ship down in Humboldt Bay. Shortest distance between here and Asia is from out of our port, that energy is then transported, not using any carbon imprint, but the electricity onboard to bring it back and forth, and you deliver that product rather than pellets. I just cannot see that being, being a good use. I think that the energy made to make pellets or Prestologs or any of those things, it should go directly into the grid, and then it can be transported overseas through that technology, or, or some other one that Eon would come up with. So maybe we can all think out of the box a little bit, and I think it'd be great jobs for Humboldt County, and I think it's doable. I think with his technology and his financing, someone, someone who has access to him sometimes might want to reach out to him and suggest that to him. So, thanks, great work that this organization does, and I really appreciate someone looking after our little counties. It's imperative that we, we don't get always thrown under the bus by the, by the big ones in California. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Hi, Connie Stewart Cal Poly Humboldt. Just want to also echo what's been said about how great RCRC is, and what a pleasure it is to work for them. And I just want all of you to know on the broadband front, I'm going to be apologizing to people in every single one of your districts soon for all the traffic that is coming, because fiber will be being laid very soon in every single district. You're already going to start seeing permitting coming on and all of that, I wish I could make some announcements today, we're, I'm about three months off from being able to. But Supervisor Madron knows it was on the Trinity outage and the last, or two weeks ago. So permits are happening right now, contracts are being signed everywhere, yes, Supervisor Bushnell, even in your area. So, so we're going to have some exciting announcements on Last Mile as well, coming to the networks. We are about 75% done with 299, and fiber's being pulled there now. One-on-one will start up soon. So, and the tribes are working really hard on figuring out Last Mile and their regions too. So it's a really exciting time, and, you know, I'm talking to a lot of companies, they're asking me to sign in EDAs, and I'm saying, no, I can't, because I'm talking to a lot of companies, and we need to do that. So, so it's, you know, 20 years in the making, thank you all for all of your support, it's been fantastic, and, but, we're in the permitting stage, we're going to be in the contracting stage soon, it's coming, it's coming to communities. So, thanks so much.
Good morning, Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. I just want to say thank you to Pat and to RCRC for the work that they do for rural counties, for Health and Human Services. We are so much different in smaller counties than the big counties, and having representation like them, we have staff that work really close with Tracy and Sarah at RCRC. And I, I hear from staff that they are so knowledgeable, and so collaborative, and provide information to them on a regular basis that help us move forward in the community. So, appreciate that work, so thank you.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the board letting me serve on this. 13 years ago, we didn't belong to RCRC. They've been in, in substance since 1976, I believe. We just didn't belong, and we hadn't. And I'd heard from a couple of people, I think the New Supes Institute, I'd heard a little bit before that, and I brought it back, and I remember Amy Nielsen and I, she was the Assistant CIO at the time, went to Tahoe to the first meeting, and it was a small meeting, just, I mean, like eight meetings, they didn't have like 30 yet to decide where to go and everything else, because we're much smaller. And I think we became the 35th county, there are 40, and I like, I, I'll tell you, one of the people that speaks more at our meetings is Alpine County, 1190 people. And you want to make life easier, he only needs to have 85 votes to win their district. You can take them all to lunch. But RCRC's been a great help all along. Connie on the broadband, working with them, even though we're not part of Golden State Connect, Connie has been a help with Barbara at Golden State Connect to allow us to get to where we are. I think I went to my first PUC hearing eight years ago, on getting fiber optic from Petrolia to Honeydew. So those two could connect, because they were having to go for their, for their learning, for some of the core training, they were having to go into Ferndale to do that, because they didn't have the bandwidth to do some of their curriculum. So, I appreciate that, it's an honor to serve, and I appreciate, Pat, thanks for coming, and we will set up another employee webinar, and I'm sure you're going to take everything back and get us answers. The other thing he didn't mention, I think Steve, I'm not sure, on waste management, they have been very active in waste management, they've extended it for the smaller counties out a couple of years, and they actually just got some relief for us, our mid-sized counties, so, because nobody's ready for it, nobody can afford it, nobody can, nobody can do it, and they've got all the information on that, so. Appreciate it. It's been moved and seconded. All those in?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you good with that, Nick? Unanimous, yes?
I'm good, it's past 5-0.
Appreciate it, thank you. Pat, thank you very much, I know you want to get back to
Back to work.
It's like this here every day, if you're thinking about telling people where they should move. Okay, next item, we're going to go on to Life Plan, is that right? Mike? Or Headwaters, excuse me, Headwaters.
Before we start, I'm going to recuse myself, because there's a portion of this item that involves a decision that, with relation to Life Plan Humboldt, and my partner is a consultant for that, so.
Hello Chair, and Board Members. Scott Adair, Director of Economic Development for the County of Humboldt. Your Board has tasked our agency with supporting initiatives and projects that create opportunities for job growth, and also where there's a nexus between that job growth and the creation of new housing for our community. Therefore, today, we are bringing to your Board for ratification and consideration an authorization request to allow our Headwaters Fund Partners, REDEC and AEDC, who are both present today, to draw up to $2 million, or $2 million from the revolving loan fund to support the Life Plan Humboldt project in McKinleyville, which, as a reminder, I know you're familiar with the project, is estimated to create over 160 housing units for seniors, 60 additional areas for development for affordable housing, and is anticipated to create up to 40 jobs. Won't get into many of the details of the project unless afterwards you'd like to ask some questions, I know we're a little past time, and I know that you have a public hearing scheduled. So what I will do is offer to your Board to receive partner updates from AEDC and REDEC, who are both present with us in the room today. And though they're not listed on the agenda item as a partner, Life Plan Humboldt is here, and representatives from the Headwaters Fund Board are also here, in the event that you have any questions with regards to the project or action previously taken by the Headwaters Fund Board, which I will add was unanimous recommendation from the Headwaters Fund Board to move this project to your Board for support and approval. So with that, I'd like to call, we'll start with Greg Foster, Executive Director for the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission, AKA REDEC.
Good morning, Greg Foster, Executive Director of the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission. So we're here on two things on this item, one of course is the Life Plan Humboldt, and our Board, excuse me, our Executive and Loan Committee will be considering that tomorrow, and staff is recommending approval. The details in there are somewhat complex, but basically, this is a large participation with the County of Humboldt Headwaters Fund, and AEDC is the lead lender, and we really appreciate their work on this, makes our job easier, because they do all the, the write-ups on this, and this is another example where Headwaters, AEDC, and REDEC have come together in a participation agreement where we share risk and we share reward. And the other big project is the NCIDC building, the Carson Block. So this is an exciting project for us, we're not typically involved and have some restrictions around participating in housing, but, but we can do this, and the job creation is especially important for us. And so we, we, I expect my Loan Committee to approve it tomorrow, and the Executive Committee thereafter. The other items you're talking about is the extension of the agreements and enlargement of the agreements, and of course, we are in favor of that. But I do want to say, just by, by context and how the Headwaters Fund has been helping us, and we've been helping the Headwaters Fund, really in a mutually beneficial agreement. We made our first loan out of the Headwaters Fund 20 years ago, which pains me a little bit, because that's longer than I thought I was in this job, but we have, in that 20 years, lent a little over $10 million out of the Headwaters Fund. And it's allowed us to do two things, one of which is make more loans, because it's an additional source of capitalization, but it's also allowed us to make larger loans. So in 1999, when I started at REDEC, we had $1.2 million in loans out into Humboldt County. As of April 30th, we have a little over $13 million out in loans in Humboldt County to over 60 businesses and organizations. And Headwaters Fund is a big part of that, because it allowed us a certain level of scale, and it also allowed us to use Headwaters participations as match for grants for recapitalization. So since 2017, we've got, been able to get another $6 million in lending capacity to add to our, the original grant that the County received in 1977. So it's been a real benefit, and when I say mutual benefit, our loss rate on that is 0.6%, so that's very low. So we have, we have not, we've been fairly conservative with our use of the Headwaters Fund, but we've also returned $2.2 million in cash back to the Headwaters Fund over those 22, or 20 years, in your portion of the interest. So that has also provided a fair amount of funding for the operations of the Headwaters Fund in return. So it's a great mutual benefit. I don't expect that I will be around in another 20 years, I hope, at least, to, to celebrate the, the time of another 20 years of success, but I have no doubt that there will be another 20 years.
You mean in this job, you press me around.
Exactly. Well, I definitely, 100%.
Do you have a drug date, or just, you know?
Rex and I will be stumbling around Ferndale, you know, and they'll say, make sure that he get home okay.
I'll pick you up.
Fair enough. Yeah, so, so, you know, in another 20 years, I know that you'll probably have another Executive Director from REDEC up here talking about another 20 years of, of successful partnership, and looking forward to this project and a continuing relationship, so thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I would also like to include our other Headwaters Fund loan partner, and that would be the team from the Arcata Economic Development Corporation, their Executive Director, Ross Welch, is here, and I believe is accompanied by staff.
Hello. I come here before the Board of Supervisors about every 10 years, so you probably don't remember me. So, and I'm shorter than Greg. So my name is Ross Welch, Executive Director, Executive Director of Arcata Economic Development Corporation. I've been there 16 years, after about 30 years in banking, and I was, as I was preparing to come here today, I started looking through my old emails, and I found the very first email about the potential of helping to fund the Open Door Clinic in Eureka, and this was January of 2011. That was the first community development project where we pulled together several partners to, to create a capital stack for financing a project. And that one, so I'd only been there three years, I remember Herman Spetzler came in, the late, great Herman Spetzler, who taught me a lot of stuff in a very short period of time. He said, Ross, I know you can do this, I need $2 million, and we hop to have it in 90 days. I've got 18 months to get this $10 million grant out and build this building. You can do it? So he's scaring me, I was like, I can? Okay. So what happened, Open Door got a $10 million grant to build that building, and they had applied for it from the feds the year before, they didn't get it, but it stayed in the hopper. Unfortunately, or maybe, things always work out, but Safeway came in and bought that lot, and so the next year, Open Door got the grant to build it, but the lot was gone, so they had to find a lot quick. And they did, bought from City of Eureka and a private individual, but you can't use the grant money to, to build that. So, so we had to make something happen. So with AEDC, at that time, Humboldt Area Foundation was in, and Headwaters was in, and we got that, and as it was being built, it was, looking back now, it's kind of a no-brainer, because they had $10 million to build it. But that was our first project, the first big project. Prior to that project, we, we couldn't put something like that together, we just haven't, haven't thought about it. So I just want to highlight just a couple of the larger projects that we have done with Headwaters money, and then got back out. These are loans, not grants, and every, every dollar we use of Headwaters, we have to match at least a dollar from outside, but normally it's a lot more. So, that was our first big project. That, and again, I give Herman credit for like, you know, making sure we can do this again, so we documented how to do it, and we've done it. Since then, we did the Carson Block building, and when I say we, Headwaters, HAF, REDEC, and AEDC each put in $375,000 to do a million and a half bucks. The problem is, that thing wasn't earthquake retrofitted, so none of the banks want to touch it. And the only way we can make that work, I thought, would look good, we'd got the BIA Guarantee, Bureau of Indian Affairs Guarantee, and that leveraged, that changed things a bit. So that million and a half dollars, that building, if you've seen it, turned out really well. And that was in 2012, and we're still doing some cool stuff with it. After that, Sequoia Park Zoo Foundation, they had a, roughly a $4 million grant, it wasn't quite far enough to get it done, so I think we made a $675,000 loan to the foundation, Headwaters did half, and it's done. It's, it was completed, they paid about half of it back, and then when they disbanded here, I don't know, a month or two ago, they paid off the balance, and it was done. 2015, then 2016, and 2017, Arcata Fire Department, and, and the McKinleyville Substation, or whatever, that department, with a lot of help from Humboldt Area Foundation and some Headwaters Funds. We were able to do the construction on that, so they could get both of those completely done, and then we're out of it. So, that's been done and gone, and nobody knows, but that's what we did with the Headwaters Fund, and then, after the Carson Block building, we had the BIA guarantee ability, so the Hoopah grocery store came out, Ray's left the building, the state, or where they're working at, getting out. So there was a food desert out there, and we, basically, that was a $4.2 million project, Headwaters funds in that, and I forget how much. But because of that, and what the Headwaters But because of that and what the Headwaters, if you read the actual original part, is to help leverage funds and get funds into our area. So of that 4.2 million, 2.8 of that is split between two of the largest CDIs in the state of California that aren't even here. One's Community Visions out of San Francisco and then RCAC out of West Sacramento. So that brought money into our area and we used the BIA Bureau of Indian Affairs Guarantee again on that one. So it's not about, and when we started, when I started here, we had $1.5 million access to Headwaters. And I just, I've already taken too much time, but all Headwaters money has to be matched and we've gone way beyond that on the matches on some of these. And it's really flexible. And Ryan, who's sick today, Ryan Hites, he asked like, well, what could we do to improve? And one, and I thought and thought and thought, and then I thought a little more and said, nothing really. We have worked really well with all the different Headwaters boards and stuff. Mainly, nothing to change, but just to be open to different ideas. And the last few years, we've been able to get some guarantees on these larger amounts, which is actually, that'll come up on Life Plan. We're getting an IBank Guarantee, State of California, and that helps improve things and also helps us leverage funds. So as usual, I got off topic, but also what's really important is our smaller ones. We've done a lot of business startups, roughly 70 or 80 over the years. And I looked at this, I should have put it on a nice little chart with the little arrows, but I think over the years, we've probably kicked in about, I don't know, a million and a half, $2 million in interest, and we've had about 375,000 charge-offs. So that's, we've returned a little over 1.1 million to the fund. And that's it. That's my quick 20-year background of our Headwaters experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Executive Director Welch. And board, I apologize. Next time I will modify the staff recommendation to read, "Receive Partner Updates" in theatrical accents for, for your entertainment. So just as a recap.
Entertainment.
Oh. To recap what Director Welch did say, this loan does have a guarantee from the IBank, which does reduce risk to the county and to the Headwaters Fund. That IBank Guarantee is one of the reasons why this recommendation received unanimous approval from the Headwaters Board. Also important to note that this is a short-term loan, up to three years. There's guarantee up to seven years on the loan, but we're not looking at tying up these funds for 15 or 30-year period. Also important to note, as laid out in the staff report in the financial impact section, these dollars are being used as leverage. AEDC and REDEC are bringing other funds to the table and Life Plan Humboldt has been bringing matching funds to the, to the project as well. The recommendations today are to approve the extension of the term of the participation agreements, the lender agreements with AEDC and REDEC, which would enable us to facilitate this draw of funds for Life Plan Humboldt. Also to ratify effective dates on previous agreements. Those previous agreements were brought to your board previously and they were addressed in a prior resolution, as is explained in the staff report, but they do require ratification prior to us amending these agreements to extend the term. With that, happy to answer any questions that you may have. And as stated earlier, representation from the Headwaters Board and Life Plan Humboldt are also here as well. Thank you.
Bring it back. Mr. President.
Scott, were you saying that the recommendations in our staff report need to be amended or changed or you were just clarifying a future?
I was just clarifying that the recommendations are to receive the partner reports, presentations, which you did.
I see all the list here. I'm just wondering, is that still valid or are you?
Yes, no, this list is valid.
Okay.
Yeah.
Short form, appreciate it. Well, I'm willing to make a motion, but I think we ought to have public comment first probably.
Why don't I? Is, is somebody from Life Plan, who is here from? Pat, I knew you were on there. Can you explain it in a broader term? And what is the affordable, I know 140 units aren't going to be affordable. And let's say, I want to go buy a house in Life Plan Humboldt and I have a, a state of a million dollars or, you know, and plus. So I mean, so where, what would I do? How do, how do I do this? And then can you explain what the affordable housing level is going to be? And the other clarification I had with, do 501(c)(3)'s pay property tax?
I believe the answer to the last question is no.
Okay. That's, that's okay. So there won't be any county? Okay. All right. So if you could, which is huge savings, can you explain the workings of a Life Plan?
I will, I will do my very best to be succinct on this. This is a fairly complex offering, though it's done around the country. By the way, my name is Patrick Cleary and I am a member of the Life Plan Humboldt Board. I am also one of the original board members of Headwaters Fund and served on that as chair for about four years. So the Life Plan Humboldt is a senior facility that allows people to age in place. It is different in that you will not own the residence there. You will pay an entry fee and that entry fee will guarantee you that you can stay there the rest of your life, at which point when you either leave or, you know, most likely have a, you know, a passing, your heirs will receive 80% of the original purchase price back. But it is a, you know, it is a community-owned, so the nonprofit will continue to always own the property. And then as the units become available, they will be, more people will buy in for entry fees as well. The, the affordable housing project is actually going to be a subdivision on the property whereby Life Plan Humboldt will then sell a portion of the property to, and Scott, help me if I get this wrong, but Rural Community Housing Development, is that the new name? It used to be part of Humboldt Bay Housing. And they will develop a separate affordable housing, but we will have mutual agreements to provide services to them. And so it will be sort of an integrated campus, if you will. Does that help?
Yeah, I'm just, because I know when we get anything of this, of this size, we're pretty adamant about 60% of the living, you know, wage, they have housing available and stuff. What do you mean by affordable housing in this?
It's a standard definition by the state of California. I mean, this would be similar to the projects that Danco does and things, but this would be done by, again, Rural Community Housing out of, I believe they're out of Ukiah or Willets now.
So, and this would be done in conjunction or after the 140 units are built? It looked like it was almost afterwards and I'm just.
Well, and I believe this will be coming to the Board of Supervisors sometime separately, but it will be sort of concurrent as soon as, once Life Plan Humboldt, assuming that you approve this loan, Life Plan Humboldt will be able to purchase the property, at which point they can then propose a subdivision to sell the portion of the property to the affordable housing developer. And then they will separately develop the affordable housing portion while we're developing the, the primary Life Plan Humboldt.
And are they a 501(c)(3) also?
Yes. Yes, definitely.
So, and then monthly cost, if I want to move in? I saw something like Hillsburg's $8,000 a month.
Yeah, well, Hillsburg is Hillsburg. And we're not Hillsburg, but yeah, I mean, it will be $4,000 a month or so. We're still.
Depending on your floor plan and, and the amenities you want.
Yeah, and the level of services that you need and things like that. There will be, you know, there will be memory care facilities there that cost.
Which are going to add.
Yeah.
And now, obviously, somebody comes in and gets their unit and then progresses into needing memory care. Does, will he have to move into a memory unit or does he get to stay in the same unit because it's so compact or?
The, the goal is to keep them compact, I mean, keep them in place if necessary, you know, if possible. There will be a separate facility that if, you know, the person requires more.
Activities.
I think it'll be 10 beds for memory care altogether.
Okay. I'm just, I'm interested in the affordable.
Yeah.
Housing part and where that comes in.
It's been a big part of the board's concern as well that, I mean, obviously, you know, the, a large part of the Life Plan Humboldt, it will be existing homeowners who will, as you pointed out, be selling their home and using that to pay the entrance fee. But the, the board felt very strongly that it should be, you know, an integrated project. And so we, we sought out the affordable housing developer so that we would have that, you know, element, you know, so it would be all one community.
Through the chair, if I may, the, the affordable housing threshold does vary based on community because of incomes and other demographics.
I understand.
Yeah. And I also believe, well, one thing I should note that today's item is just for the loan. The, the project will still have to go through the planning and building process and that would still come forward to your board. But I think we have some clarification on the property tax issue. From what I understand, a nonprofit would have to apply for a waiver for an exemption so that it's, it's not necessarily a foregone conclusion that they would be exempt, that the waiver would have to be approved.
How many are denied? I'm just, I'm now looking.
We are fortunate to have.
Since you brought it up, I brought the assessor.
We're fortunate to have our expert.
That's why I asked.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
We're not talking about the building right now.
No, but I just, but, but yeah, we are because we're talking about a $2 million loan for the building.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
The, how many are denied when they apply for the waiver?
I don't know the number offhand, but there are requirements. Just because organizations, 501(c)(3) doesn't make them automatically exempt. They do have to go through the state to qualify and then our office has to confirm that they're meeting the requirements.
It was just, I just.
Yeah.
Nothing against Project.
That is, I have familiarity with that.
I just got a couple of phone calls and questions and I decided to ask them.
Yeah, sorry. I don't know the number off the top of my head.
That's fine. That's fine. All right. That's it for me.
Any other questions while I'm here? Thank you.
Okay, this is, is this a fourth? Anybody else? Mr. President.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation and Scott and staff for working, you know, on this very important project in McKinneyville. And I just want to say, you know, a little bit more of the background on REDEC and as well as the Headwaters Fund. Both of these were created when some private property was being acquired to go into park status. One was Redwood National Park up in the Oric area and the other was the Headwaters Forest. And in both cases, there was going to be economic impact, reduced property taxes for one. And so these were both programs that were created in order to try and mitigate for those economic impacts, and I think they've been incredible programs. REDEC continues to do all kinds of things. Greg has been working more recently to really come back to Oric and say, you know, what can we do to help Oric out? They definitely need that help. And Headwaters and REDEC have both been involved in some really great projects over the years. So I am certainly fully supportive of, of all of this. And I also want to thank Life Plan Humboldt, the Board of Directors, the staff, and how they've worked with Ann Pearson, who has this vision in McKinneyville to create a town center, of which this project will be part of that town center. And they've really created an amazing partnership there to help add to that town center with senior housing as well as some affordable housing. And it is truly a community benefit project. Life Plan Humboldt, you know, it's not always the case with developers that they embrace wetlands and trails, but Life Plan Humboldt has. They've literally embraced the wetlands that they have on their property and they're doing a great job of trying to figure out how to either maintain those or improve them, as well as having trails running through the property, community trails and an extension of the, the Midtown Trail in McKinneyville that will run through the property. So I want to applaud Life Plan Humboldt for their engagement and Ann Pearson for her work to try and really continue to have this vision for McKinneyville that goes beyond a Main Street, anywhere USA chain store kind of a thing. So this is going to be a fantastic asset for the community and after we've heard from the public, I'd be more than happy to make a motion to support this. Thank you.
We will now have community comment.
Kent Swatzky, I'm not one who sent any requests for Rex to ask any questions, but I do have some comments to make along that same line. So the way I understand it is that, and I would ask the proponents of this project to, to commit to not moving forward with the exemption from property tax. I, I think it's, it's a real loophole that's employed here. In other words, property tax is used for schools, a vast majority of it. Property tax is used for the sheriff, quite a bit of it, whatever we can get to county. And I think these projects should, should be paying their share of property tax no matter what. I realize there's benefits, but in, in Blue Lake, they have a Danco project potentially out there and same kind of thing where they're, we're not going to get any revenue out of it. It's nice to have them, but I don't see why with a deficit budget we have that we should be funding these projects. They should fly on their own. I do, I don't have a problem with loaning any of these loans, especially short-term loans. Just make sure that the interest rate is variable and tied to some kind of index or inflationary index. In other words, when we end up getting the money back, let's say in three to seven years or whatever, that it's still worth the same equivalency. So we might be expecting back $2.75 million as far as, as far as what come back in or we'd be getting the interest in the meantime. So we break even. That's been the problem with the Headwaters. It just seems to go down with time. I did kind of look at this project and maybe I misunderstood it, but there are a couple options. One was the option where they get 80% back of their original thing. There was another one where they, you have a lower buy-in and you get nothing back. Maybe that's changed. I also questioned, let's say somebody like, somebody would go ahead and make the million dollar buy-in and then pass on 15 years later from then with inflation, that million dollars the kids would get back would be a half million dollars equivalency. So all these things kind of are a little bit troublesome as far as the basic plan goes. And I think some of those things should be taken into consideration as the rest of the plan develops. I understand we're just doing with this initial loan. I don't have problems with that. I did want to make last, that note here that one of the, one of the most creative, my influential people around the house, Michael Fields is back here and he's been doing a great job with Headwaters. And so I strongly support, you know, and have communication with him. And why is he, why is he so smart? Well, he owns the Lager Bar in Blue Lake and the manhole cover out there says the center of the universe. So anyway, if you know Michael, I think you'll, my confidence in his decision or unanimous decision to move forward with this is basically what I would rely upon. So not going to come out against the project, but I do think all these projects should be paying their fair share regarding our necessary taxes. Thank you for opportunity to speak.
Anybody online, Nikki? All right. Mr. President.
Yes, so I would appreciate the, the comments that were made and I believe it's a 7.5% interest on this loan. That's not, you know, that's a little higher than even the market rate right now and it's a short-term loan. So that seems to cover what's necessary there. So I will make a motion that is basically staff recommendation, but I remember not too long ago, Virginia Bass and I were helping to lead some of the updates to the board rules. And one of the comments we received from the public was that when we simply say, recommend approval of staff recommendation, the public doesn't really know what that means. So I'm going to go ahead and read these into the record just for clarity and for the public's sake. So recommendation is to, a motion to receive the partner updates on the lending activity through the Headwaters Fund Revolving Loan Fund. And number two, approve the Fifth Amendment to the Redwood Region or REDEC's Headwaters Fund Lender Agreement to extend the agreement term to June 30th, 2026, and increase funding available to $4 million. And number three, approve the Third Amendment to the AEDC Headwaters Fund Lender Agreement to extend the agreement term to June 30th, 2026, and increase funding available to $5 million. And number four, to ratify the effective dates of previous amendments to the Headwaters Fund Lender Agreements and Headwaters Fund Master Participation Agreements as described below in the staff report. And number five, to authorize AEDC and REDEC to collectively draw $2 million from the Headwater Revolving Loan Fund to participate in interim financing for Life Plan Humboldt.
participate in interim financing for Life Plan Humboldt.
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Thanks you for answering those questions. There's still a lot more out there and everything else. So I'd, I'd like, I'd love to find out more. I have spent some time this weekend following up on some of the other locations that, that were listed here and then a couple others, so. No, we'll, no, no, we can, we can talk afterwards, doesn't seem, for this portion of it. So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? 4-0 and it was a four-fifths vote required.
Thank you, board.
Wilson?
I'll fix it on the backside of the meeting.
Okay.
It did, it did pass four.
And I do, Greg, when we were talking about broadband earlier, I did want to mention that you're kind of like the grandfather of broadband, so, you know.
You know, I used to be the young activist, now I'm the grandfather.
You're just an old man now.
Thank you all.
Yes?
Just waiting to hear if you want to move on to the proposed fiscal year 2425 budget as the next item.
Well, they've got it on in there. I would imagine he's. Want to bet?
All right, before you now is the proposed fiscal year 2425 budget. This is always an exciting day for us and marks the downhill slide on the budget preparation. I do want to thank all of the departments and the department heads who have probably put up with lots of questions and poking and prodding from our office through this process. And it has been a, a difficult budget year for everyone, so want to recognize that. And then also a big shout out to the CAO, Management and Budget Staff, Sean Quincy, Karen Clower, Katie Gallardo, Vanessa Erickson, and Jessica Maciel, who put in many, many hours and nights and weekends doing this budget. And before you is Jessica, Deputy County Administrative Officer, to present the budget.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Bone, members of the board. As CAO Hayes said, I'm Jessica Maciel, Deputy County Administrative Officer, and I'm here to present your board with the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget. And I would just also like to reiterate the things that CAO Hayes mentioned to department heads and additionally, department fiscal staff in working with us to implement a new budget software this year. It has went relatively smooth and that is in no short way the result of their hard work in helping us to implement that.
Nikki?
Oh, you're on it. Thank you. We will start with a little review of the budget process. It begins early in the calendar year when the mid-year is presented to your board. This year, that took place on February 6th. For, through that report, your board establishes the parameters for preparing the fiscal year 2425 budget. For this year, those parameters included a status quo budget for the general fund with a 20% reduction in the additional request for general fund that your board allocated in 2324 for ongoing personnel costs, as well as a reduction in allocations for the voluntary separation incentive program. Departments that participated in the VSIP were not subject to the 20% reduction to their ARGFA or to their additional request amount. Your board also directed staff to accept additional requests for general fund appropriations for one-time expenditures and to review the general fund contributions to other funds and agencies that take place in Budget Unit 110199, as well to deallocate fiscal year 2425 unfunded positions. As your board knows, we have had a history of in keeping positions but unfunding them in order to make the budget. And that has presented problems in our office's ability to track those positions. Additionally, to continue the contributions to the Public Agency Retirement System, PAR's account at 2% of salaries. And finally, a couple more that are not up there to, again, for another year, suspend the deferred maintenance contribution and reallocate any remaining American Rescue Plan Act funds to previously allocated ongoing costs. With the parameters in place, budget prep kicked off on February 21st. We had our kickoff with departments. Budgets were due to the CAO's office by April 2nd and the CAO's office reviewed budgets in April and May. Additionally, we held budget ad hoc meetings with the departments during March and April. Outside of the usual process, on May 6th, the four department presentations, I presented a budget update including a projection of the general fund. And today, before your board, is the presentation of the proposed budgets. Budget hearings will take place next Monday, June 10th, at 1:30 and 5:30. And the final adoption is anticipated to take place on June 25th. Start with a look at the personnel distribution for the coming year. The total personnel distribution is, the total personnel for the coming year is 2,344.73, full-time equivalent. This is a decrease of 98.54 positions or 4% over the fiscal year 2324 adopted positions. Your board directed staff to deallocate unfunded positions and that accounts for a large portion of this decrease. The primary decreases were in the sheriff's office, planning and building, Public Works, and DHHS. The total budget before your board is for fiscal year 2425 is 606.75 million, including 606.72 million in expenditures and $22,400 in transfers out. The total proposed budget represents an increase of 27.5 million or 4.7% more than the budget your board adopted for the current fiscal year. This number is higher due to several accounting changes implemented over the last year, which resulted in a reduction in the use of transfers. In 2324, transfers accounted for an additional 14.4 million recorded as other financing uses. Taking this change into account results in a higher total budget for 2324, which would result in only a $13.1 million increase or 2.2% over the prior year. For the general fund, projected revenues for fiscal year 2425 are 141.68 million, which is an increase of 12.1 million or 9.3% from 2324. Discretionary general fund revenue is projected to be 88.8 million, including 13 million in Measure Z revenue. This is an increase of 4.3 million over the prior year adopted budget, $329,745, of which is attributed to Measure Z. The $4 million increase in discretionary funds from fiscal year 2324 is due to anticipated increases in property taxes, transient occupancy tax, and interest revenue. In fiscal year 2425, the general fund will utilize 13.86 million in the use of non-measure Z fund balance and 4.7 million in measure Z fund balance. This is a reduction in non-measure Z fund balance of 4.5 million from the prior year of fund balance use. The fiscal year 2425 budget proposes that your board allocate 165.27 million in general fund expenditures, broken down as you see on the slide. This is an increase of 11.17 million or 7.2% from the prior year. As described in the total budget, there was a similar accounting change. So this is really accounting for that. It's an increase of 1.49 million with, which is less than 1% over the prior year. A couple of highlights to this, because the county worked really collaboratively through this process to reduce expenditures and this increase doesn't necessarily reflect that work. 4.7 million of the increase is use of measure Z fund balance. 1.8 million is due to utilizing a one-time funding source, ARPA, for fiscal year 2324 jail medical expenses and $538,680 is due to an increase in indigent defense mandated costs. General fund wages and benefits decreased by an overall 3.2 million or negative 3.3%. And wages and benefits make up a lower percent of the general fund expenditure budget at 57% as compared to 63% last year. So at the mid-year budget presentation, your board directed staff to review general fund contributions to other funds and agencies through Budget Unit 110199. These contributions include ongoing allocations. We found there are 6,341,286 in ongoing contributions. 5.5 million were determined to have an associated mandate match or contract. Of the remaining $807,265, the CAO recommends funding $693,700 in the proposed budget. This eliminates two allocations that are not recommended. $94,615 for the county library for general library use. The previously allocated amount was $153,000, but they put in for a reduced amount. And this is not recommended as the library fund does have sufficient fund balance to maintain the services without this general fund contribution. They will still receive their general fund contribution for the county librarian as that's mandated in code, as well as $8,000 for the Hoopaw Library. The other allocation that is not in the recommended budget is $18,950 for DHHS Public Health utilized as a fee subsidy for agricultural businesses. This is not recommended as an industry-based subsidy for which the general fund is unable to support ongoing. DHHS Public Health will not be negatively impacted as they can incorporate this into the fee schedule and charge out the cost. Additional requests for general fund appropriation, and I just have one, I made a small error in the staff report. I didn't quite get a final update in there. Just the total numbers are correct in the attachment for the additional request for general fund appropriation. But in the actual staff report in that section, there's just a small amount missing. So the total recommended request is 12, not 11, and the total is $2,112,920. $2,112,900... $2,112,921. Sorry for that. Your board will provide direction on the additional request for general fund appropriation at budget hearings. There were 31 original requests submitted for $5.4 million. Staff were able to find alternative funding sources, including deferred maintenance funds and finance plan for six requests totaling $1.8 million. Our office facilitated a meeting of department heads to review and gather input on the priority of the requests. This is a new process we implemented this year. During this process, the sheriff's office withdrew one request for $455,000. After these changes, 24 requests remained for a total of $3.2 million. Given the budget deficit, the CAO would typically recommend that no ARGFAS be funded. However, given the ramp-down approach, staff set a target fund balance use of no more than $14 million. With that in mind, staff recommended 11 requests for $2.1 million. And as I mentioned, after we met with the budget ad hoc to review the additional request for general fund, they pointed out another request for the veterans utilities that should be recommended. And so that one was added. So there are 12 requests for the $2.1 million. We did, before bringing that to the budget ad hoc, we, our office met with the department heads and they helped us to establish a priority for the requests, considering the strategic plan, support for mandated services, and support for reorganization and efficiency. This differs from the board direction in funding one-time expenditures. As many of the recommended, you will see are ongoing existing staffing requests. The CAO recommends that all ARGFAS, if funded, be considered funded on a one-time basis and reconsidered in the next year. So this next section is considering negative fund balances in other funds and monitoring those. We have a number of negative fund balances in other funds which are a threat to the general fund and negatively impact the interest earned by the general fund. It's important the entire agency implement prudent fiscal practices to correct and prevent funds from having negative fund balances. Staff are recommending a hiring freeze for funds that anticipate a negative fund balance with their fiscal year 2425 budget. I will quickly review the six funds listed on this slide, though only the first four are recommended for hiring freeze as they have budgeted for an ongoing negative fund balance in fiscal year 2425. Both economic development and purchasing are not budgeting for a negative fund balance in 2425. First, we'll look at the two DHHS funds. This is Fund 1160, sorry, it's a little small. Fund 11, but these charts are also in the staff report. Fund 1160, Social Services Administration, and Fund 1170, the Behavioral Health Fund. Of primary concern is the Social Services Fund. As previously reported, this fund has gone negative. At the mid-year, staff estimated improving the negative fund balance due to outstanding long-term receivables. Over the past several months, DHHS have, staff have determined that there are not sufficient receivables to fully correct the negative fund balance. They anticipate ending fiscal year 2324 with a negative fund balance of 16.9 million. And they expect to receive 3.9 million of outstanding receivables in next fiscal year, which will result in a continued negative fund balance of nearly $13 million. This is a significant downturn from the previously reported outlook for Fund 1160. DHHS staff have reported that they are working to establish strategies to reduce expenditures and save discretionary revenue in order to remedy the negative fund balance. The Behavioral Health Fund has traditionally had an ongoing negative fund balance. As, as previously reported, Behavioral Health has significant outstanding long-term receivables due to a lengthy cost settlement process. They report $8.1 million in receivables, which if they received, would resolve their negative fund balance. Public Works has two funds, the Road Fund and the Natural Resources Fund. The Roads Fund, of course, we've been talking extensively about, it's estimated to end 2324 with a negative fund balance of $8.5 million, which is an increase of $758,730 in negative fund balance. Currently, Public Works reflects Federal Emergency Management Agency reimbursements of $8.1 million to be outstanding, which nearly is the full amount of their negative fund balance. The disaster responses require utilizing The disaster responses require utilizing funds that were planned for road maintenance, reducing the amount of road road maintenance that can be completed. So your board directed staff to develop a local revenue measure for roads and essential services, and this item will return to your board in July. Um, and if approved, will be placed on the November twenty, twenty-four ballot. The Natural Resources Fund and Public Works draws in millions of grant dollars every fiscal year. Annually, they receive a small general fund contribution of twenty thousand dollars, which is recommended from the slide, a few slides ago on the budget unit one ninety-nine. Um, for costs that cannot be claimed to grants. Over time, their fund balance has dipped into the negative with an anticipated negative fund balance of over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars the end of twenty-three, twenty-four. They anticipate a small, long-term receivable balance of sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. However, this is not enough to cover the accumulated negative fund balance. Finally, um, as I mentioned before, uh, these are not budget, these two C A O funds are not budgeted to be in the negative for the coming year. Um, however, we've previously reported on these two funds and want to provide updates to your board. At the mid-year budget update, staff presented that the Economic Development Fund, while still positive, was likely going to dip into the negative. Um, to rectify some of this, Economic Development have included administrative funding requests where appropriate and have turned down projects that do not have a funding source. Um, while Economic Development has submitted a budget that does not result in the negative fund balance, it is anticipated that it may not meet all of the obligations for Project Trellis. Staff continue to work on reconciling Project Trellis funds and anticipate requesting a budget adjustment to ensure state obligations are met in the coming year. As for the Purchasing Fund, this is just an update, a quick update, that um they will have a negative fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four due to higher-than-anticipated cost allocation plan charges. However, um, they are correcting that in the coming year and implementing a sixty-day working capital so that they will hopefully not go into the negative again should charges come in higher than anticipated. Um, this is just a quick recap of the action your board took on Measure Z and what is included in the recommended budget today. Um, on May seventh, your board reviewed the Measure Z applications as prioritized by the Measure Z Advisory, Citizens Advisory Committee. The committee had four point one million available to allocate in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five process. Three point six million of fund balance and five hundred thousand of anticipated additional revenues. There was an additional fund, there was additional fund balance due to underspending by county departments and a one-time accounting adjustment to accrue July and August sales tax. Um, the committee's recommendations funded the first five ranked projects with forty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars of available funding. Your board accepted the committee's recommendations, only adding the City of Arcade a Juvenile Diversion Counselor Project for the remaining available balance. Um, looking forward, staff are estimating thirteen million in revenues, keeping projections just under the estimated actuals. So total county obligations, including carry-forward projects and the reserve account, are proposed at seventeen point seven million dollars. At budget hearings next week, staff will review a carry-forward request from Public Works for a fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three project for your board's consideration. Quick update on Measure S. Um. As of May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, the Treasurer Tax Collector had three hundred and fifty-seven payment plans and had received five hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four to date. Outstanding payment plans totaled just short of five million dollars, though it is not anticipated that all payment plans will be paid in full. Due to the uncertainty sure of this revenue stream, staff have not budgeted for it in the coming year. Um, any receipts of cannabis excise tax will be available to fund fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, a couple other funding sources, um, just to quickly review. The ARPA funds, um, twenty-two million dollars. The county received a total of twenty-six point three million dollars in ARPA funds. Twenty-two million in ARPA funds have been expended, and it is estimated that an additional six hundred and twenty-seven thousand will be expended prior to the end of twenty-three, twenty-four for a total of twenty-two point six million expended. The remaining three point seven million has already been obligated by your board to seven remaining projects, including um HVAC for the regional facility and I T, childcare programming, Behavioral Health Triage Center, the Housing Trust Fund, um, a small remainder of Headwaters Administration Audit Services, and H R staffing, the H R staffing piece um was the on, your board directed staff at the mid-year to allocate any remaining funds to ongoing costs. That's where that went. It was a hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars that were able to be put towards H R staffing for the coming year. Um. And that was due to not spending as much on COVID testing supplies and to underspending by H R in the current year. L A T C F funds, that's the Local and Tribal Consistency Funds, um, which were also made available through ARPA from federal government. Um, the county was awarded almost three point two million in L A T C F funds. Uh, your board allocated one million of those funds to earthquake response. Um, of the one million, five hundred thousand has been expended. A hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and three dollars is pending a hundred percent reimbursement from the California Office of Emergency Services for sheltering, and two hundred and fifty thousand remains obligated. While a hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven remains available for future earthquake response needs. If full reimbursement is needed, is received, that will have, there will be two hundred and fifty thousand available, unless your board should choose to reallocate those funds.
Could you repeat where the eight seventy was spent? Did you just?
Sorry, what was that?
On the one million dollars, a hundred and thirty-one, so there's about eight seventy spent. Where was that spent again?
Yeah. Fi- five hundred thousand, so five hundred thousand has been expended. Two hundred and fifty of that, two hundred and fifty thousand of that was to the McLean Foundation as the fiscal agent. And then two hundred and fifty thousand has went to Habitat for Humanity. There's still another two hundred and fifty thousand obligated to Habitat for Humanity that hasn't been paid out yet um, because it's upon completion. Um, and uh, the hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and three is the remaining amount that has not been reimbursed for the sheltering piece. Yep. Um, in addition, nearly two point two million remains available and unobligated for your board to allocate in twenty-four, twenty-five. However, given the ongoing budget deficit, staff recommend holding these funds as unallocated while we work to stabilize the general fund. Um, and finally, opioid settlement funds. As with last year, we organized the opioid work group, um, which includes the Sheriff's Office, D H H S, probation, County Council, and D H H S to consider how to allocate the funds for the coming year. Um, and that is reflected in the proposed, the uh, their recommendations are what is reflected in the proposed budget. We've received three point four million dollars in payments to date, um, and obligated one point six million in twenty-three, twenty-four, and have one point nine million reflected in the proposed budget for the coming year. Um, the majority of which are going to D H H S Behavioral Health, Public Health, the Sheriff's Office, and a small amount to probation, which is new this year. Um, the one funding source that is not listed here is the Measure J Occupancy Tax, uh, transient occupancy tax. As your board requested to form an ad hoc to discuss this further, we did meet with the ad hoc, and your board will receive a report on June tenth before budget hearings with the results of what came of the ad hoc. Um, and so as recommended, the proposed budget includes this as keeping this in the general fund, but your board will um be able to make a decision on those funds on June tenth. And this, now we'll just run through the recommendations included in the proposed agenda item. Um, the first recommendation is an annual inter-fund loan to the McKay. Um, previously, this was included in the budget, but we've always had to do a resolution for this. They're requesting three hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the coming year. Um, this also includes a correction to fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three in which we had underfunded the loan. Um, so we had funded, we had approved it, your board had approved it at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, but the actual expenditures were three hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, which is reflected in the resolution today. Um, the Tax Loss Reserve Fund, we are able to transfer some of those funds to the general fund annually. Um, and it's estimated to have a balance of four point three million dollars at the end of the current fiscal year with an additional one point seven million in revenue anticipated for the coming year. Um, this fund requires that you leave one percent of the total property tax assessment in the fund ongoing. And so in order to maintain that, um, we are recommending to, to transfer two million dollars in the coming year. Um, next, we are recommending a hiring freeze. Similar to this year, we're recommending that departments in the general fund that receive an additional funding request for ongoing personnel costs are subject to a hiring freeze and will come to your board to request exception to the hiring freeze for the, if that is funded as is recommended. Um, that would include the Auditor Controller, Human Resources Personnel, Public Works Land Use, Public Works County Surveyor, the Sheriff's Operations, and the Public Defender Conflict Council. Um, additionally, new this year, we are recommending, um, as we discussed on the negative fund balances to, that we also implement a hiring freeze on the funds with an ongoing negative fund balance. Um, to continue to make progress on the structural bu- budget deficit, we recommend your board consider a hiring freeze for these. Um, this action will work towards personnel expenditure reduction through attrition and reducing the ongoing deficit. Those funds include eleven sixty, Social Services Administration, eleven seventy, Behavioral Health, seventeen twenty, Natural Resources, and twelve hundred Roads. Oops, I did not want to go forward. Um, the CalPERS unfunded liability payments. Uh, CalPERS is offering a discount for the coming year and per the pension funding policy revised by the board on April twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. Um, if they provide a discount, if CalPERS provides an incentive or discount for prepayment, that we get approval from your board to um, remit as prepayment. We have traditionally been doing prepayments. Uh, the savings offered in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five by CalPERS for prepayment for our, for the County of Humboldt is one million, one hundred, thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars or a three point two percent discount. Um, it is estimated that these funds could only earn approximately four hundred and four thousand or four hundred and five thousand um in the county treasury, which is well below the savings provided by the prepayment. Staff recommend prepayment of the U A L in the coming year. Next, um, as the county continues to navigate difficult economic conditions and expected shortfalls, staff recommend that your board authorize department heads to approve voluntary unpaid furloughs for employees under their appointing authority for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. A number of departments have been reaching out to our office for requesting paperwork for this. Um, so several departments are planning on offering this again in the coming year. Um, the Housing Trust Fund, your board has taken action to allocate funds to the Housing Trust Fund. However, we haven't physically created that fund. Um, so this is just directing the Auditor Controller to create that fund and move the ARPA, T O T, and D H H S Social Services Funds that are currently being housed in the Emergency Response Fund over to that fund. Um. For, for the ARPA funds, we will do that as a contribution to the general fund and then um, a general fund contribution to the Housing Trust Fund. And the purpose of this is so that those funds are obligated. So um, you'll see in the proposed budget that it's a, we're doing it as revenue replacement for the um, general fund, but then those will be set aside for the housing purpose. Um, and finally, the, we are just recommending that your board reconsider a contribution to the General Reserve at the mid-year. Um, the current funding level is ten point six million, while the target funding level is at minimum sixteen point five million. Um, it's important that we continue to try to prioritize saving and bringing our general reserve to a recommended level. Um, but recognizing that we are struggling to fund our current appropriations, we recommend not doing a contribution at this time. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Nice job. Appreciate all your work on this. I've seen nobody want to look my way, so nobody wants to ask a question. Seeing no questions, I'll bring it up to public comment.
Ken Swawski, I, I like your staff recommendations. I think the concept of saving money uh should have been initiated when it was suggested probably seven or eight years ago when we had quite a bit. And to continue to save it, I think is in our best interest now. Uh, we're going to need it for critical purposes. As earlier, I supported uh, keeping the sheriff's budget as much as we can because we can have nice trails, we can have nice things. But if we're not securing our homes and not able to use those things because of proper law enforcement. The other thing, uh, I did wish to make a mention, uh, because there were considerations on the Measure Z money. Um, maybe your committee may need to get a little more information sometimes. Uh, the City of Blue Lake made an application for uh, and really appreciate, people really appreciate the sheriff working with the City of Blue Lake in Trinidad. Uh, they made an application for thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the total cost of our law enforcement with the sheriff is about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. With the money we got from the uh, the uh, state to fund our budget of law enforcement, if they had gotten the thirty-five thousand dollars, they would have had seven thousand dollars more than our actual costs they would have put in their general fund. With the reduction to thirty thousand dollars, they still would have had two thousand dollars more than their actual cost. So they would have no money invested in their, in their thing. And I just think maybe, maybe some of these transparency things and questions, a few more numbers to understand the need of somebody. If they don't actually need the money for that, it shouldn't even have been considered. But I do strongly move forward. The other thing is, you're going to be apparently putting on a two percent uh, uh, tax for roads, uh, possibly in November. Uh, the biggest thing about the, the people is it's called self-help. It's the same thing with the, with the state. Uh, so if you expect the taxpayers to put in money, if you have any kind of latitude that you don't already have designated, strongly supporting you, show yourself helping and put that money into the road system. Otherwise, you're going out to the, to the voters, and it's really hard for them to, to say, well, you didn't do everything you could out of your budget, so why are you coming with your hand out? So I think that's important. We all know, understand how important, uh, what a great job Tom Mattson does with Public Works on roads. And so I, I do support, support that. But gen- generally overall, from what I've seen, that the budget's had a thorough review, and I look forward to that passing, hopefully with little changes or objections in the, the near future. Thank you. I'll have to speak.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else? Anybody else want to come up, you can line up and.
Yes, my name is Regina Fuller, Deputy Director of Financial Services for the Sheriff's Department. Um, as is with yesterday, the sheriff was unable to be here. Um, but I do know that he would like for you to reconsider the hiring freeze. Um, yes, we are an ARC F A funded department going into next um, budget season. But for at least our deputy sheriffs and our dispatchers, if you can make an exception and not put a higher- if you can make an exception and not put a hiring freeze on those two classifications, unless you intend to instruct our office as to where we are to cut services. So, if you intend for us to reduce dispatch or patrol services in the next fiscal year, then yes, a hiring freeze. But if you don't, we would appreciate an exemption to that. You know how long our backgrounds take at our recruitment. So, it would really be helpful to not have to come before your board to hire those classifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, is there anybody online? Nobody online? Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, just process. Appreciate the information here. It's just a CAO question. And there are things in here, I'm like, hmm, I'd like to have further discussions with staff about. Is, is for, in terms like board discussion, we have June 25th, this is coming back. Are we going to have any other opportunities pinned down on June 25th in terms of, in terms of the board?
Yeah, the public hearings on June 10th, that's really your opportunity to make any, any changes your board sees fit to the budget. And then we incorporate that into the adoption on the 25th. So, the 10th is your greatest opportunity. And that's a public hearing being held at 1:30 and 5:30.
Okay, it's not just for us, it's for everybody else?
It's for all the folks to come, tell you what they would like to see out of this budget.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna get any details today. I appreciate this report. I appreciate the words gone into it. I appreciate everybody and, and acknowledge the anxiety that this creates amongst departments and everybody else. And hopefully, we'll get through this as painlessly as possible.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. If we wanted to have our change exception for the hiring freeze, would that happen on Monday?
You could do it on Monday, but you can also give us that direction now as well. That's an easy incorporation to make into there. You, the staff recommendation is to approve the hiring freeze. And so, if you wanted to provide any exceptions to that, then we would return with that authorization for those specific exceptions.
Okay, so around discussion with my board then, I mean, it, before when we had the hiring freeze, we did accept for public safety, I believe, there was, there was some conditions on there. Not this last year, but the following three, two years ago. And so, what, what, Regina, can you come back up? Because we, so we approved 25 positions to be lifted, I think, last couple of weeks ago or a month ago. So, go, in the future, what would that look like with this hiring freeze? And I have a question for you, too.
If you were to provide it by classification, then, then the sheriff would have the authority to make his own discretionary decisions as to when he fills those classifications. And deputy sheriff and dispatch is what Regina indicated. So, there would be no parameters in terms of number of positions he could fill or anything like that, which is what occurred in that last exception, where you allowed for 25 positions to be filled.
Okay, so if we wanted to say, and do you know how many positions in the?
So Supervisor Bushnell, so to try to explain, so what we're asking is if they're funded for the fiscal year, that we be allowed to hire for them as needed. We can't predict our turnover, but you know our turnover is pretty high. When the sheriff did come asking your board for an exception this fiscal year, you gave us one and we had to come back, because if I recall, the correctional deputy classifications, you allowed for us to hire 12. So, we hired 12, but because of turnover, we had to come back to your board today, in fact, and request for more. It wasn't that we're asking for more FTEs, we're just asking to fill for the ones we have. And, you know, because of the turnover in those positions, it's, it's hard to predict. So, we could say, okay, can you give us 25? Well, we may still come back to your board, because we've lost 25 people, even though we've hired 25 people.
But, and so, they're positions that are already budgeted for?
That's what we're asking for, yes. So, yeah.
So, I would be, I would be interested in that, and I don't know how this board feels, if we could have some discussion around that.
Well, I think as we move forward with that explanation, that it's not an added value and we're below our, 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 what we used to have in the past. And then if they're budgeted, they're not asking for any more money. And they've got to stop hiring when they run out of money, we'd hope. So, I mean, the idea is with the turnover rates, we, we heard earlier about signing bonuses, those are running rampant in the law enforcement. And we have to show some sort of commitment. So, I, I wouldn't mind, they still have to get them. It takes, oh, eight to 12 weeks to do backgrounds, sometimes more. And they've, we've got, we have three or four retired annuitants that are helping with that. So, I think as we move forward, excuse me, go ahead. Oh, so anyway, I, I don't have a problem with them meeting what they've lost. So, if we gave them 25, but they lose 25, I don't, you know, I don't backfill it that way. Do you understand what I'm, yeah, okay.
Supervisor Bushnell?
So, if we adopt these recommendations today, but then, you know, maybe my board wants to have discussion or investigate about that, it still can be changed on Monday, correct?
Yeah, you, you would give us the direction on Monday. And then when we returned with the adopted budget, we would add in there, provide an exception for X, Y, and Z.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think this.
You're fine.
I think this would be a good time of, to ask those departments that are, want to get really specific about, and ask similar to this, to provide a memo or something, some sort of documentation and with the fiscal impact that we can take a look at at that time. Well, it'd be great if we could get them by Friday or whatever it is. The other thing is for the, for, just for the public, the budget's out in terms of like the draft. So, there are things to take a look at. It's not just the staff report. There's, there's a lot more in there. And if you want to get into the details, by all means, do it. And it's for every department, so. With that, I'm, I'm willing to support staff recommendation at this time and make that motion.
I'll second it, and I'll add that I think, you know, something along those lines, providing additional information that you'd like us to see before evaluating this, you know, another time on Monday would be helpful. There are barriers to hiring for law enforcement, and I know that it's a lengthy process. The same is true for other departments with the merit system services process. You know, for different reasons, different levels of complication. So, I think it, you know, there are positions that would be affected or departments that would be affected by all of the recommended hiring freeze departments. I know it is not easy for any of them, so I'd like to understand, you know, if they would like to request that we reconsider that, that we get that information. So, I think that's a reasonable thing to, to include and that we be able to, you know, not be individually, you know, that, that we all receive the same information. Not to say that we, you can't individually reach out to us, but it's helpful to have the coherent written information that's the same for all of us as we're evaluating this and that we can share and talk about publicly in the hearing.
Through the chair, one, one, I, I do, and I, I really want to emphasize that any of these requests or changes, not just from departments, but also in our discussions as board members, that we remember that certain things we talk about are orders of magnitude different than others. And sometimes we get wrapped around the axle of things that are, seem to be quite a little bit in the minutia. And I just, I just want to make sure that we're aware of that in our discussions as we move forward on Monday, so that we can really hold court on the, really kind of the bigger items as much as we can. That's not to say that every detail isn't very important, but they, as was, actually, there was a good question today when Supervisor Madron asked the question like, is this a $10,000 issue? Is this a $100,000 issue? Is this a $1 million issue? So, we, we need, sometimes we need that, that context to, to help prioritize our process. Thanks.
We can reach out to all of the departments that are impacted by the hiring freeze and ask that they submit a memo requesting any exemptions that they might desire from your board and to, to indicate in there what the budget allocation is for those specific positions or classifications.
And I think if we go back to the surveys of yesterday, there was 70% of the department heads came back with, they would like to work with attrition to help balance the budget more than anything else, instead of layoffs. And I, I'm a big fan of that. But there's also a certain port, you know, a certain part there that services cut, levels of service for different departments. I know they're all important and everything else, but certain levels of service have to be met. And we're not meeting some of them now, so.
All right, it's been.
Through the chair?
Yes.
And also, on the details of what was recommended here and what's on, I, I want to say that I, I, I do, I like the idea of the voluntary unpaid furloughs in terms of, I think that that is a reasonable thing. It gives a lot of flexibility to staff. I really appreciate the, finally, code getting around the creation of the housing trust fund, which we've been talking about for a long time. I do think that that's going to actually leverage a lot more opportunity for us in that. But I also want to say that we, in the creation of that fund, I want to make sure that we're very careful and conservative about how we apply that and leverage it for as much value and, and other funds. It'd be great.
Just, if I may, through the chair.
Please.
To that point, I have been talking with planning and building, and I believe that there will be an item coming to your board in the next couple of months with regard to plans for that, those funds.
I appreciate that. I think it's a positive move for us, and so, thank you.
Great. Well, if I'm not mistaken, it's been moved exactly, right?
It has, so Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thanks, Jess. Good job, very much. The details get better every year. The results don't come out any better, but the detail's really good. That's not her fault, no. She's just the messenger. Don't kill the messenger.
Waiting for Tom to get up here? And everybody leave? Sure, go. Tom, we're gonna take a break for about a few minutes, just three or four minutes. Are you out of the habit of, are you in the habit of turning left instead of right yet?
It's in the agenda item already.
What's that?
It's already in the agenda item. It's good.
All right.
Good afternoon, Chair Bone, members of the board, Tom Mattson, Director of Public Works. Item before you right now is an ordinance of the board regarding no parking on Washington Ave in McKinleyville. This comes out of the McKinleyville multimodal communications study that we did that was supported by the MMAC. We did two mailings to the residents, 27 parcels along the frontage that would be affected. We do have four objections, but we are recommending moving forward with this, because it is that McKinleyville multimodal communications plan was highly recommended by the community in the McMac. And it is, and we are proposing to start implementing that as directed by the board. So, if I could ask the Nikki to flip up the, the screen real quick so we can basically go really quick what through we're doing. It's not going to be no parking consistent everywhere, but there will be areas. The area nearest school road is just completed construction with new housing. And so, we've, we've flip-flopped back and forth with areas that we allow parking. But to get the bikeways in, in accordance with the plan, we do have one pinch point that is a problematic, but the bikes will get through there. So, I just wanted to show you real quick what areas of the road are going to look like, which is going to be no park, which is not going to be no park. Nikki, are there further slides in here? Basically, this is what the, the bike route configuration is. There's an 11-foot travel lane on each, either side with no parking on either side. Next slide, please. So, this is what the, the, where we have parking available on one side of the road, we will allow it. Nikki, next slide, please. Again, same thing where we have parking available, we will allow it. But the primary issue here is the vehicle movement and bike movement. And I believe that may be the last slide. Well, one more. But that's generally the gist of what, what we're doing. Where we can allow parking, we will. Where we can't allow parking, we are recommended to no parking. Specifically, again, I want to recommend this came out of community planning by the, by and for the community. And so, with that, I will leave it up to you for any questions.
Bring it back to board. Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, so Tom, when McKinleyville Avenue finally gets punched through someday, when the Santos subdivision gets completed, would that change any of this stuff here? Or would it, because I know there were some concerns about parking being lost, but you guys did a great job of continuing to work with the community and trying to find a solution. You never satisfy everybody, and that's one of these cases. But you did a yeoman's effort to try and do that. So, when the McKinleyville was punched through, is that going to change any of this, do you think?
We can always reevaluate it at the time, because that will provide that direct connect. Right now, Washington is de facto the continuation of McKinleyville Ave. But we do have the roundabout, they're going to get the BMX part there, so we can reevaluate at the time that that happens.
Yeah, that'll take a lot of pressure off of Washington Avenue, obviously. Has there been any indication that that corner house where the pinch point is, is interested in selling or moving or anything? That's the pinch point.
Yeah, that's the pinch point, and we just threw the fact out there. No, I highly doubt it's, it's kind of, you know, you have a similar problem on a city center there where you have the mobile home in the right of way.
Right.
And it, it happened in the past, and it's not cheap to move it.
Yeah, okay, so no indication they're interested in selling or moving?
No, we just threw that out as the options.
Well, thank you for your efforts. I'm willing to make a motion once we hear from the public.
Public comment? Seeing none? Anybody online? Seeing none? Bring it back to the board.
I would move staff recommendation.
I'll second, and I have a couple of questions, if that's all right.
Okay.
We did get a, at least I got a communication from Colin with the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, where he was concerned about, I think probably the intersection you might be talking about, within 150 feet of Washington Avenue North of the intersection, where there is, it seems to be some issue. And I'm just kind of wondering, did you communicate with him? He said he's, he sent some communications about.
We had communication with him.
Okay.
The issue is the, having a good turn radius. And we have to make that balance between the vehicle at the intersection and the bike at the intersection. And we tried to do the best we could, but we didn't want to make that turn radius so tight that it became a problematic.
And the turn radius for vehicles?
Yes.
So, you're feeling like, what would be problematic about it is that they would go over the corner?
That they would not see a bicycle rider and assume they weren't there and just pile ride over them.
Okay. And then, can you bring up the cross-section again? Is that possible? We are way past that. Keep going. That, that, that was fine, that one's perfect, right there. It's all good, whichever, it's, it's fine, that's just the cross-section. In many parts of, of, in communities, I mean, even in Arcata and Eureka and other places where they're dropping a lot of these lanes down to 10-foot lanes as opposed to 11-foot lanes, did you guys have, did you guys consider a 10-foot lane with maybe like a, a one-foot, like buffer line between the bike lane and the, and the driving lane?
Not, not at this time, because roads is broke, and even this striping, we're not going to complete the entire striping this final fiscal year, probably just a portion in front of the new development.
Okay.
Because we don't have the, we don't have the funding. We wanted to get the ordinance done so that we could, as, we didn't have to keep coming back to the board every time, but this fiscal year, we're, we're hitting a wall with road maintenance funding, as you saw, we're $10 million in the hole.
Yep.
And I have to do a minimum of striping, and we have a ton of striping already that we already have to do.
Okay.
And so we wanted to minimize what, we wanted to get something down, but minimize it, we did not look at a 10-foot lane at this point, because it is a, a, a collector and not, if it was a local road, we'd automatically look at a 10-foot lane.
But it, it's not precluded in the future?
No.
Okay, I want to just put it out there, you know, that even in collectors these days, what they're using these like one-foot buffer?
Yes.
Yeah, and so it's, gives you that space, but still makes the, the road feel smaller and those people drive slower. So I'm, I'm okay with what you have proposed here, but just, as you know, we're always trying to like slow it down.
Always fine to, always fine to.
Yep, yep. Thank you, sir. I'm willing to move forward, thanks. Okay.
Ready? Yeah. Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. The next item before you requires you to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors.
We're going to adjourn as the Humboldt County Board Supervisor and reconvene as the governing board of the Humboldt County Flood Control District.
Good afternoon. You have two active flood control districts, one in James Creek in Arcata, and one in Runner Creek in Fortuna. Both areas are primarily at this point within city limits while we hold the funds, so the City of Fortuna would like some of the funds that are available for their monitoring of their major project they just completed. We agree with that, and we recommend that you uproot sending them the funding.
Okay, open it up for public comment. Anybody online? Seeing none? Bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Staff recommendations.
Been motioned and seconded? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chair Bone, we'll start with you.
Yep.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson, uh, yes, Wilson?
Yes, yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
I think you need to adjourn as
I am, but I can't, you can do it for me.
Adjourn as the Humboldt County Flood Control District and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors.
What Tom said.
Yeah.
What Tom said. You want to adjourn us, too?
Do they have to reaffirm the motion? No. Yes, you can adjourn whenever you're ready.
Tom says we can adjourn, so I see an overwhelming support for that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Are we done for the day? We are, folks.
Well, up here we are, well, up here we are, not in everything